Let's pray. Father, it is an honor to be here again tonight, Lord, and we're thankful for the opportunity that's been afforded each one of us to represent our constituents, Lord, and we ask several things tonight, Father, that you just, that you be with us, Lord, and provide us the type of wisdom and discernment that we need to make some of these decisions that are going to be coming up in front of this body over the course of the next several days, weeks, and months, that we honor the constituents who elected us, that we honor you, that we practice grace and mercy where it needs to be practiced, and that we also practice our ability of discernment, that you provide each one of us to make the best decisions that will honor Rutherford County. We think about the Pinkston family tonight, Lord, and their loss with the accident that they've had. I just ask that you surround them with the peace that only you can provide through your Son, and allow them to recognize that their community supports them, and that they're behind them, and that we're going to walk with them down this challenging path. Be with those who are watching tonight, and those who are in our audience tonight. Allow us to represent the good that is in Rutherford County, and allow people to see the things that make our county such a great place to live. We ask all these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
I declare my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Kaplan.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serrino.
Here.
We have a quorum, 20 present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order, and move that they be, move that we dispense with the reading, and that they be approved.
And do we have a second?
Sir.
Commissioner Kush. Anyone else identify any corrections or additions? If not, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Tonight, we do not have any public comments, so Commissioner Turner, elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, you'll find on your iPads a list of notaries that we need to prove, and I make a motion for their approval.
And a second from Commissioner Phillips. Anyone have anything we need to ask, to add to that list? If not, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Thank you.
Chairman would also like to announce the three vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board. Chairman would like to announce an opening for the county coroner vacancy. Chairman would also like to announce the reappointment of Dr. Rosemary Owens to the Consolidated Utility District Board. Chairman would like to also announce the appointment of David Jones to the Planning Commission.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Turner. All right, the next on the agenda is resolution to approve the consent agenda. We'll call on Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I've also reviewed the consent agenda, find all those items appropriate, and move that consent agenda be approved.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Anyone wishing to remove any one of those items may do so now. Does anyone wish to take anything off of that list? If not, we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you for that very much. Let's see. We'll have the public hearing starting at 6:30. We're ready to start on the reports by standing committees, and first is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, Commissioner Jordan.
Good evening, how's everybody tonight? Glad to say we got such a good crowd. Wish everybody should come out every month to watch us read the budget res- they all came to hear the budget stuff, I feel sure. Got item K-1A, General Fund Budget Amendment. This is to provide funds for money that were ceded into the wrong fund last year. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. The county mayor decreased unassigned fund balance $1,000, to increase other charges $1,000, resolved this 17th day of November 2016. Mr. Mayor, I saw move.
All right, second Commissioner Piercy. Any questions or discussions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Right, record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
You?
Item K-1B, a resolution, a solid fund budget amendment, that's for hauling of leachate, pushing packing of trash, and to place cover dirt over the trash. Be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the solid waste fund be amended as follows. Post-closure care costs, decrease assigned for public health and welfare, $50,000, increase expenditures post-closure, $50,000. And landfill operations, decrease assigned for public health and welfare, $286,000, increase expenditures, contract to private agencies, $286,000, resolved this 17th day of November 2016. Mr. Mayor, I saw move.
And Commissioner Dodd, thank you very much. Anyone have any questions or discussions here? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K-1C, Cooperation Agreements with the Smyrna Housing Authority. Actually, we've got two resolutions. We have to vote on these separately, so I'll take them one at a time. First resolution is, whereas the Smyrna Housing Authority requested Rutherford County enter into a cooperation agreement with the Smyrna Housing Authority for a certain residential rental affordable housing development known as Mayfield Manor on 400 Mayfield Drive in Smyrna, Tennessee, and here is the cooperation agreement would exempt the property of the Smyrna Housing Authority from taxes and special assessments as required by pursuant to TCA 67-5-206. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County, Tennessee, to enter into said agreement with the Smyrna Housing Authority, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the cooperation agreement attached hereto is Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, be and the same is hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. Be it further resolved that the mayor and authorized county officials be and the same are hereby authorized to sign and enter into the attached cooperative agreement, cooperation agreement, for and on behalf of Rutherford County, resolved this 17th day of November 2016. Mr. Mayor, I saw move.
Okay, and we need a second. Ms. Cook, all right. Now, any discussion or any questions? If not, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, and the next one is for Stewart's Creek Manor. Resolution, whereas the Smyrna Housing Authority requested Rutherford County enter into a cooperation agreement with the Smyrna Housing Authority for a certain residential rental affordable housing development known as Stewart's Creek Manor at 701 Stan Circle in Smyrna, Tennessee, whereas the cooperation agreement would exempt the property of the Smyrna Housing Authority from taxes and special assessments as required by and pursuant to TCA 67-5-206. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to enter into said cooperation agreement with the Smyrna Housing Authority, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the cooperation agreement attached hereto as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as if, as if set herein at length verbatim, be and the same is hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved. Be it further resolved that the mayor and other authorized county officials be and the same are hereby authorized to sign and enter into attached cooperation agreement for and on behalf of Rutherford County, resolved this 17th day of November 2016. Mr. Mayor, I saw move.
Second, Commissioner Schaefer and others. Any questions or discussion? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
We've got one more item that didn't make it through budget or public safety, dealing with staffing at the jail, and we'll need a motion to suspend the rules to hear this tonight. Commissioner Schaefer has been asked about this, being the chairman of public safety, and I'll make a motion to suspend the rules if that's appropriate, if I can do that.
Yes, sir. And we need a second. Second by Commissioner Schaefer. So, any questions about this? We're just going to have another amendment that you're going to get to consider regarding staffing there. All right, if there's no other discussion, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, continue on, Commissioner Jordan.
This is a resolution that provides funding to change four positions from detention officers to booking officers that has to do with the study that was just done at the jail, or the
Inspection.
Inspection by the state to correct some of those issues, and it's not something that could wait another month to go through the budget process. This money that's already in the line, I'm just moving from guards to bookings, so. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Jail, decrease expenditures. Guards, $84,000. Increase expenditures, other salaries and wages, $84,000, resolved this 17th day of November 2016. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
And we have a second again from Mr. Schaefer. Any questions or discussion? It's all within the budget, it's just reallocating the resources to an appropriate, more, higher need, we think. Yes, sir. Commissioner P.
Are we adding any officers there, or are we transferring officers' duties?
The 12 positions that you approved previously for detention officers, we're going to leave eight of them as detention, and we're going to redesignate four of them as booking officers. So you have the same number of people, it's, that we're having in place, but we're reallocating where we're locating those at this point in time.
What I needed to know, thank you.
Yes, sir. Other questions? If not, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
I've got one more thing. Seems like we make the news a lot lately, especially today. In the last couple of weeks, it's not always favorable for Rutherford County, but we've got a letter of recommendation, or commendation, from the State Comptroller's Office, that I'm just going to read one paragraph of, to maybe pat ourselves, or our budget and finance departments pat them on the back a little bit, because there is a lot of good things happening in Rutherford County. Commendation, we recommend Rutherford County has elected and appointed officials for adopting the fiscal 2017 budget before July 1st, 2016. The outstanding work of everyone in Rutherford County will assist in better managing of the county's finances in the coming year by immediately instituting appropriate budgetary controls for the fiscal year 2017. Adopting the budget in a timely manner allowed the county's financial staff more time, more time to close the county's official accounting records, and those, and have those available for audit by August 31st for the fiscal year 2016, as required by TCA 9-2-102. And that's just a little paragraph from the state, but a whole lot of counties didn't get a budget passed, and due to the work of our staff, especially Ms. Nolan and all her people, I just want to say it's a good job of them, and they were recognized by the state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schaefer?
I'd just like to add something to what Commissioner Jordan said, and that's, we are one of the few counties that when July 1st comes around, we have the budget for that next fiscal year. But it says a lot for everybody when we do it.
Good job. Let's give him a round of applause. We still have about 10 or 11 minutes. I think we can get through this next one. The Health and Ed Committee, there's no report. There's not a report from the Property Management Committee. Now, when we get to public safety, we have a, sort of a special report here from Trey King regarding our probation recovery services, so we'll invite him to come up and make this report, and do we have something up there, Brian?
Yes, sir. Just a second.
Get ready.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As you see here, this is our six-month review coming back for probation that was started from April 1st and ends October 31st. As you will see from the indication above on this first part here, the total expenditures for probation recovery services for the first six months has been $618,602.72, and they vary based on the breakdown there. I'll take any questions as far as expenditures, if anyone has any, or we can move on down to revenues and to the rest of the report. Okay, if we go down a little bit more on the combined revenue fee operations that you'll see, for the first three-month period, you'll see that is in blue, the last three-month period is in purple, and the green is the total combined. And it breaks down the different classifications of the revenues that come into the probation office. The program class fees that we have, we've brought in $7,400. The drug screens, we've netted $15,396.88. For the SCRAM, that's our electronic monitoring device, we've brought in $70,646.44 during that time period. Our supervision fees, which allows for our regular supervision, our diversion, and our retirement supervision, you will see that brought in approximately $323,528.76 for combined total of $416,974.95. If you look down towards the bottom as we go down through it, you'll see there's a difference between those two of $201,627.77.
I might want to stop just a minute. See, there, still up with you, okay?
Y'all follow me? Okay. I've laid this across from everybody's desk as well, just to kind of read along, or if you'd rather see it here, but as we go down into the bottom part here for the fiscal 2016, 17 revenue breakdown, this is starting to include the court costs and fines and the other revenues that we collect for the courts. As you'll see, the total combined collections for that six-month period is $1,473,622.29. You subtract out the expenditures that we had in the department, that leaves a surplus amount of $855,019.57. At the very bottom of this report, you will see that, coming into probation, a lot of times when people would have remaining in their, in their term, if they owed money to the courts, or they owed money to the probation office, they would have to be taken to jail, there'd be a warrant taken out for them. So now, what we decided to do was to do an administrative order. We would sign off on it, the judge signs off on it, the defendant signs off on it, allowing them to go into a voluntary payment agreement. So instead of putting them back in jail for not paying fees, you now turn it over to a civil matter. So when all you have is collections, that allows the civil courts, or to pursue, I'm sure our county attorney can go through that as well if need to be, but that allows the civil function to collect those outstanding remaining balances. So at the bottom, you'll see, just in that six-month time period, we have placed onto payment plans a total of $695,905.26. So this is revenue that's outstanding, that we are trying to collect.
Now, are there any questions for Mr. King? Or comments? Or commendations? Commissioner Allen, excuse me.
On the surplus amount that you combined for, it shows the 855, and then you've got the fees owed, is the, is the amount that's owed, is that included in the surplus amount?
No, ma'am.
You're not accounting for it until you've collected it?
Yes, ma'am. So this is, this is in addition to all of that.
Commissioner P, did you have something?
That was my question, too.
That was your question?
I'm sorry, I should have explained that a little bit better. But just to give you a kind of an idea, and I know y'all may or may not care about this, but to get it to an understanding, we see right now, as of today, we have 3,551 people on probation currently. So that is a pretty taxing, and just to give you an indication of how many cases we have closed in that six-month time period, we have closed out 2,622 cases, and we still have 3,551. So it is a steady business. We have nine case managers, that equates to about 425, 450 per person. So, I mean, we don't have lines, it's in and out pretty quickly, we're spending 10 to 15 minutes per person, and we're seeing 40 to 45 a day per case manager. So it's efficient, it's effective. The overall goal is to reduce the recidivism rate, that's how we measure our success.
Any other questions for Mr. King? Commissioner Reed.
Thing that I'd like to say is that serving on the Public Safety Committee, we receive this report every month. So we are seeing this, and as we have gone along with this, as it has continued each month, we've been very pleased in what we are seeing. And we commend that the work that's being done there, I think, is a, is a good job, and we're looking forward to see how this, this goes on in the continuing months, and seeing a complete year as we, we see this. But, you know, this has always been a question to the public out there as far as how this would operate, and appreciate you being here this evening to do this, but in public safety, as I said, these reports come to us each month, and we have the opportunity to gleam these numbers and see exactly where we are, but we do appreciate the work's being done there.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it. It's, my staff is the reason why, and we are success. So all the credit is due to the staff at the department.
Commissioner P.
Well, I'm not on public safety, but I have been getting copies of the report, put in my mailbox, and been reading them. But the reason I even wanted to stand up and say this was to say to you and your staff, thank you. You're doing a tremendous job for the county.
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
And Commissioner Schaefer?
Well, I have to echo Commissioner Reed's compliments, because I, too, have gone through them, and I've talked with Mr. King pretty often, and I think we're in a lot better shape now than we were this time last year, and that's the important thing. And it's going to take us a while, though, to see what the recidivism rate is, and get through them, but we are, by doing this, we are able to keep the jail population down. There's other things that have factored into that, but this is one of them. So I think Mr. King and his staff has done a great job for the county, and it's got, we got our head above water now.
All right, thank you very much, we'd appreciate that. Okay, it's just two or three minutes away from 6:30, so without objection, we're going to start the public hearing process. And, so the first public hearing is a rezoning request, 16-A015, on behalf of Bajay Patel for Overall Creek Partners located at 4431 Veterans Parkway, and existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is commercial services on a site of about 1.1 acres. Mr. Demossi, tell us more about that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Burgess, and good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. This first piece of property, as was stated, is located along Veterans Parkway. The applicant would like to rezon this property for possible commercial use. No real specific use at this point, no concept plan or anything like that, it's really more of a speculative rezoning. They may develop the property themselves, or they may sell it off to somebody else at this point, they're just not sure. The current residential use of the property will be allowed to continue under the county's Non-Conforming Uses Lots and Structures section, which is located in Chapter 13 of our zoning ordinance. Grandfathering status would be lost, however, if they ever develop the property in a commercial manner, or if they decided to discontinue the use for greater than, or longer than 30 months. As far as access, of course, it would be from Veterans Parkway, any parking spaces, landscaping, anything like that would have to be built to today's standards. Also, any commercially zoned property is subject to our performance standards, which regulates things like noise, dust, odor, hazardous materials, and those kind of things. As far as this area is concerned, staff believes this is an area in a state of transition. Since the completion of the widening and realignment of Veterans Parkway, there's been multiple non-residential uses introduced to the area. Examples include Middle Tennessee Electrics Proposed Campus, which is north of this subject property. There's a new Kroger development that was just opened across the street from the subject property, and the county commission has already rezoned a couple of properties further to the north of this property as well. So with that, there was very little discussion on this issue at the Planning Commission's meeting. They did have a couple of questions regarding some of the properties to the north of the subject property, and if they'd had inquired into any rezoning possibilities for their property. At this point, we have none, but ultimately, the Planning Commission did vote to approve this by a unanimous vote, except for one abstention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any question of Mr. Demossi? Okay, so then, please stand aside, Mr. Demossi, and we will declare the public hearing for rezoning request 16-A015 open. For those that wish to speak, it's your opportunity to come forward and make your comments. So, any of you that wish to speak regarding this particular application, please come forward and give us your name and address. All right, it does not appear anyone wishes to speak on this particular application, so we will declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion? Mr. Gooch.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve with staff comments and conditions.
And a second, Commissioner Kush. Now, other comments, Commissioner Jordan?
I would just like to say that I own a piece of property that joins this piece of property, or a part owner, and I will be abstaining from this vote.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or discussion or questions? Therefore, hearing none, we are ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record, record the votes.
19 yes, one abstain, motion passes.
Second request is number 16-A016, on behalf of Mark Jones for Steel Barrel Brewing, located at 6790 John Bragg Highway. The existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is a planned unit development for a brewery facility on about 82 acres. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Just to call Commissioners' attention to your iPads, in one of the folders there for this application, you'll see this pattern book that goes along with this application. It's also included on your iPads, along with the agenda materials that I'll be referring to. As stated, this property is located along John Bragg Highway. The applicant's proposing to rezon the property for the Steel Barrel Brewery. It's a facility similar to the Arrington Vineyards in Williamson County, according to the applicant. Directly from the applicant's pattern book, the project would be to create a 15,000-square-foot brewing facility and associated parking areas. This facility would provide space for the brewing of craft beers, a tap room for beer sampling and sales, a sensory room, and labs. These labs would be for a new fermentation program, which will be started at Middle Tennessee State, starting in the fall of 2017. The partnership would allow for students of the program to utilize the brewery's facilities to learn about the science of fermentation and the brewing industry. The facility will also grow and cultivate its own hops on-site for the brewing of those craft beers. A majority of the 82 acres of the property would remain as agricultural or open space. About 45% of the southern portion of the property, which is the farthest part away from John Bragg Highway, would remain unchanged, and would be utilized for livestock, pasture for cattle. The central portion of the property would be for the brewery facility and other amenities, and then the fields for the growing of the hops, of the hops that will be as part of this. Effluent water produced by the on-site step system would be utilized for irrigation of the hops grown for this process. The applicant also identifies a number of amenities and outdoor programs for visitors and guests in the pattern book, such as a par-three golf course, disc golf, and an outdoor venue. And again, there's additional information in the pattern book. This is a pretty unique use, it's not really specifically located in the zoning ordinance or identified, so that's why staff requested that this be a planned development, just because of the uniqueness of this particular application. In addition, and this, there were some questions about this at the Planning Commission staff, they have indicated that they may have the ability to do wedding events, or different corporate functions, things like that, at the property at some point. We have specific regulations in our zoning that deals with that, and they understand that they would have to abide by that. Parking, of course, parking and access would all have to be done according to our current standards. There's an existing median cut in the center of the property in John Bragg Highway, they would just utilize that existing area for the access. Landscaping as well, they'd like to preserve as much existing landscape material on the property as possible. Most of it, again, is going to remain undisturbed, and again, the performance standards would apply here as well. Overall, staff is comfortable with this request. It's a large piece of property, again, over 82 acres, and most of it's going to remain undisturbed, with the exception of the buildings, parking areas, and then the venues for the potential amenity areas. The remainder of the site will be used for agricultural purposes. John Bragg Highway is identified as an urban corridor in our comprehensive plan, which does contemplate these type of non-residential uses. does contemplate these type of nonresidential uses. And although it's a nonresidential use, I like the fact that it's been designed to remain compatible with the rural nature of the area. Again, there were some questions at the planning commission. Again, I discussed the issues with the possible events using as an event venue. There were also some, there's a church immediately adjacent to the property. There were some questions about distance requirements, which this site appears to meet. There were also some property owners in the area that just had some questions about the operation and hours of operation, noise, odors, those kind of things. Most, the activity, as far as the fermentation, will all be indoors, so odor should be at a minimum. But ultimately, after discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval of this application by a unanimous vote. The applicant is present and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Demosie while he's here with us? Okay, sir, then. There being no questions for him, we're going to declare the public hearing open for rezoning request 16- A016. And those that wish to speak for or against this request, it's your opportunity to come forward and give us your comments, along with your name and address. Anyone wishes to speak, please come forward.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Rob Mulchen, 3912 Roland Road. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mark Jones, the developer of this property. Just wanted to say that we're going to bring a unique piece of property to this county in regards to bringing the brewery facility to the property itself. I think it's a great opportunity. We're going to be able to preserve a pretty good sizable chunk of existing agricultural land for this facility. Like I said, it's going to be a 15,000 square foot facility. It'll have a brewery inside. But the major component of this, that's a great teaming action, is the relationship that we're working with Middle Tennessee State in regards to their new fermentation program that'll be coming online in the, in the fall of 2017. The idea with this is that they will utilize a small portion of the brewery facility to help the students of the fermentation program learn about fermentation, brewing and the industry itself. And it'll be a live classroom exercise facility that'll allow them to utilize those facilities that they're being utilized on a day-by-day basis for the brewing facility of the craft beers that Steel Barrel Brewery will be bringing forward. Again, like I said, the mass majority of this property will be preserved. It's in some type of open space. As Doug alluded to, we'll be providing multitudes of activities for the brewing, get visitors to the brewery itself. We'll be looking at the nine-hole disc golf course, but it'll also be their little par three golf course challenge hole there, so you can come with your friends and you're out there enjoying the beverages. And it's going to be set more or less like the same kind of atmosphere that Arrington Vineyards has, but more in a beer context versus a wine context. So I'll be available for any questions if you have any questions.
Just a moment. Does anyone have any questions for, he is representing the owner, for him? Commissioner P.
Will there be any sales on this property?
Yes, sir. There'll be beer sales. You know, kind of like Mayday Brewery, Growlers, that kind of stuff. So it's not a full-blown brewery facility like you would think, like Anheuser-Busch or something like this. This is more about micro or craft brewery type stuff. So you'll be able to come to the facilities, go to the tap room, taste the different kinds of craft beer that they're offering, and then you'll be able to purchase and take some home with you.
Josh, I'm going to need an explanation on how this reconciles with our setback from alcohol sales from a church.
Mr. P., on behalf of Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones went to each and every one of the neighbors surrounding this property, including the church itself, to more or less, before even started the process, to find out from them that they were okay with this. Regards to actually the code or statute for the county itself, we are outside that limitations of the distance from the church to where the brewery facility would be in regards to that.
Mr. P., I think that's measured building to building and my understanding is they are outside of the required setback. To the extent, however, there is state law that somehow precludes what they're doing, that would be outside the jurisdiction of the planning department. And they, of course, will still have to comply with such a statute, should one exist, that would affect this.
But I haven't received any complaints about the facility and, you know, there's some good things there, of course, with it. But, you know, knowing state law and the distance there, that's why I asked the question. All right, thank you.
It's a good question. Thank you.
Any other questions of this gentleman? All right, thank you. We will allow the next person that wishes to speak to come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Tony Johnston. I'm the director of the fermentation science program that we're creating at MTSU. And I want to speak to the importance of this development for the sake of the fermentation science program. Included in the plat, in the design for the building, are some classroom spaces and a sensory lab. The fermentation science program is not specifically focused on the fermentation of beer or any other alcoholic beverage specifically, but these, the sensory lab itself is going to be vital for us to utilize for all of our students, no matter what fermented food we evaluate. We currently, we don't have space on the university immediately available for us to begin this program. So the value of this program, for the university to start this program next fall, is almost beyond compare. I can't explain how important it is. As you might be aware, every fermented food that we consume, we consume these foods because they taste good. And we need a place to actually have the tasting and teach the tasting of fermented foods in a controlled environment, so that when these students graduate with this, with this degree and they go out and work in the fermented foods industry, regardless of whatever fermented food they're creating, they understand the sensory component of a fermented food and they can fully evaluate that product based on using the space that we're going to have available to us. So I just wanted to make sure I can answer any of your questions regarding the use of that facility by the university. We're very excited to have this partnership with Steel Barrel and I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much then, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak? I do not see anyone rising to come forward, therefore we'll declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion regarding request number 16- A016? Mr. P.
As I said, I have not received any calls on this for or against, but going along with what our planning commission has recommended, I'll make a motion to approve with their conditions.
All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Jordan again. Now, further discussion, Mr. Reed.
Mr. Chairman, as Dr. Johnson has just explained here, the connection of MTSU with his project right here, and I think he did real well explaining why they are working with this. There is efforts underway to have a fermentation major out there at MTSU. I currently serve as chairman of the farm advisory program at MTSU and that committee right there has been instrumental in trying to get that major taken care of. No, this is not a major in bootlegging 101, for everybody to understand. Fermentation in foods is very important. We have a lot of students that graduate from MTSU out there that go into the food industry. This is just another method for our students, when they leave their university out there, to find employment. And this will be an important major that's only, will be available at this university in the state of Tennessee, so it's something very important. The reason I'm saying something right now is due to my connection to that committee and the hard work that we've done and this sort of thing. I wish to abstain from voting on this one, just avoid any type of conflict with MTSU and this committee and this commission.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Commissioner Baum.
I just want to acknowledge that I'm an employee of MTSU. I don't think I have a conflict of interest. MTSU's would not have any ownership in this property and I wouldn't stand to benefit personally from this program. That's not the area of MTSU that I teach in. So my inclination is to go ahead and vote, but maybe Mr. McCray should tell me if I do have a conflict of interest.
Well, based on what you've disclosed, I would not think that you have a conflict under the applicable statutes or the county's ethics policy. If you have no personal interest in the outcome of the vote, where you would gain something financially or, and you don't have an immediate family member who would gain something financially.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, if I don't see any other one wishing to rise or speak about this, we're ready to vote. And since I set a precedent on the first one by roll call, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
19 yes, one abstain. Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. We're ready then for the next rezoning request, which is 16- A009. On behalf of Beverly DeLonge. This is located at 8461 Franklin Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a planned unit development for a self-storage facility on about five acres. Mr. Demosie.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Again, before I get into the application, just to point your attention to the iPads of the file for this particular application, there's a pattern book included in there as well for your reference, should you need it. Just as a way of a little bit of history for this property, this property was the subject of a rezoning request back in August of 2015. The applicant at that time was requesting commercial services zoning for the eventual use of a self-storage facility. So as far as the use goes, that really hasn't changed any. Following the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend denial by a unanimous vote. I have included those minutes in with your agenda packets. Again, if you should have any questions on those, please feel free to ask. That never did make it to the county commission. After the planning commission and discussion with staff, the applicant did withdraw that application. The applicant has since submitted a new application for an identical use, self-storage, but is doing so as a planned development, a PUD, as opposed to conventional zoning, which is what the CS would have been. The pattern book, again, is on your iPads. The concept plan that you see in there shows only a portion of the property being used for the self-storage business. Originally, under the original zoning request, she was looking to do the whole nine-plus acres of her property. At this point, she's just looking to do about five acres now. The plan is to develop about 100 units initially, with the ultimate build-out of approximately 300 units. Additional buildings would be added when the existing units hit 80% capacity. A complete build-out, they anticipate, would be three to five years. Hours of operation would be anywhere from around 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM with possible seasonal adjustments and they would employ between one to three people. The existing house would remain on the property and would be used as an office. This came to the planning commission back in July of this year. There were a number of concerns brought up by the neighbors during that meeting, primarily concerning traffic, safety and the appropriateness of nonresidential zoning on the south side of Franklin Road, as well as the minutes from that August 2015 meeting. I've also included the minutes from the July 2016 meeting in your agenda packets as well. The planning commission, again, ultimately recommended denial of the request by a unanimous vote. Following the public hearing, the applicant contacted staff and asked, had stated that they, she had collected a lot of information regarding the concerns brought up at the meeting back in July. The applicant expressed a desire to return to the planning commission to address the concerns as more detail, as they weren't prepared to do so during the July meeting. Since it already had one crack at that particular meeting, my advice to them was to withdraw their application and resubmit, so they'd be basically resubmitting a fresh application at that point. That is what they have done and that's why it is before you tonight. After much discussion, and I'll get to the, well, I'll get to the commission recommendation here in just a minute, just a little bit more of the, the site itself. Access to the property, again, originally back in 2015 was shown off of Baltimore Road. We expressed some concerns about that. The proposal you see before you now, the access really is going to be utilizing around the existing driveway, which is at the peak of the crest of the hill in that area, which staff was more comfortable with than the original proposal showing it on Baltimore Road. There was also a proposal to have it on Deer Run Road, but again, that was, that was moved. During the neighborhood meeting back in April of this year, there were several concerns that were brought up, that being one of them. So again, that access point would be kind of at the crest of the hill at this point. Of course, any light parking and landscaping requirements, anything like that, does have to meet our requirements. They are showing a type-two buffer along the perimeter of the property, as well as using the buildings along the eastern and western property lines as part of the buffering requirements, and they would also be required to meet our performance standards. Again, there were a number of comments that were made during the planning commission's meeting last month. And again, those minutes from the October, October 10th planning commission meeting have been included with your agenda packets as well. The applicant did give a PowerPoint presentation, which I do believe they'd like to do again tonight. After discussion, the planning commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of four for the approval and then two against. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, I know there's a couple of presentations that, I know the applicant liked to make one and I believe some of the neighbors in the area would like to make one as well.
Questions for Mr. Demosie first, okay? So Mr. Demosie, are we going to make these presentations, the applicant, during the public hearing?
That's what we typically do, Mr. P.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Demosie? All right, then, we're going to declare-
Curiosity question.
Excuse me, Mr. Schaefer.
On 231, there is a storage facility, I would assume it'd be prob, somewhat south of it, pretty much. How's this compare with that one? And I'm asking that just to see, that one's been in existence for quite a few years now.
You're talking about on Shelbyville Pike, 231?
Yes.
Okay. Well, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you exactly. That was approved under our older zoning regulations, I know. And you'll forgive me, I didn't, hadn't looked into that, because being that this one's on Franklin Road. But that one, I believe now is probably zoned, I would guess, commercial services. It's probably what we zoned it when we went with the new zoning map. It was approved originally as a conditional use permit. As far as how it compares to the number of units, I really don't know, because I apologize, I didn't think to look at that.
Any other questions for Mr. Demosie? All right. That being the case, then, we're going to declare the public hearing open for those that wish to speak for or against this request 16- A009. So Hoover wants to come first and if it's the applicant or the, whatever, we'll let them, if they have the PowerPoint, we'll be prepared. Give us your name and address.
That's the wrong PowerPoint. I'm Amy Baltimore. I live at 356 Baltimore Road. You've probably heard from me a couple of times. And so I'm really just here to represent the surrounding community. If you would, if you're here, could you raise your hand or stand if you're here from the surrounding community? Okay, good. Hey, guys. Thank you for being here. All right, there we go. So the property in question is at 8461 Franklin Road. And if you can go to the next slide, if you haven't had a chance to go out there, just wanted to show you a little bit of what it looks like out there. It is a two-lane road with limited or no shoulders. There are no turning lanes out there. There's only one section of the road that actually has any shoulders and there's, you know, guardrails on either side, so there won't be any building going on around there. The area in question has multiple highs and lows, resulting in limited sight distance. Where Mrs. DeLonge has her facility proposed is actually the highest point, but as you're leading up to it from either side, you have a lot of dips that the sightlines disappear. And if you're coming that direction with a trailer or a loaded truck or a U-Haul and you're not familiar with that area, it can be hazardous and you'll see a slide later on where we show you a little bit more about that. The other thing about this road is that it drops off on either side, all along that area. So there are no shoulders and it drops off on the sides. When you come down the back of the hill toward Baltimore Road, it goes either into a sinkhole this way or off that way. I mean, it's, it's a hazardous area and I just wanted you to see it. So if you, I took a look at your long-term strategic plan for land use goals and honestly, we want the same things that you want when you really break it down. As a community, we are looking at the fact that a lot of low-density development has been going on out in the county and a lot of it, especially if you look like Highway 99, where you've got some sporadic development here and there, it's starting to kind of be a little messy. There's a three, three-term plan, right? There's a three, three-term plan, right, for fixing the road out that way and fix that. I'm just going off of what I've been reading, but we don't want that to happen out on Highway ninety-six. We don't want there to be sporadic development here, and then here, and then here, when the infrastructure is not laid down. So if you just look at your first objective, which was to promote land use patterns which result, and sustain quality of life, the property in question is not really near a city or community node, such as Veterans or Fortress or Ammival Road. We're looking at rezoning an area that's surrounded by agricultural and rural and residential, and not even like big neighborhood residential, just pocket neighborhoods. There's a road here, and off it goes, and there's a road here, and off it goes. So the existing, there are existing commercial properties available for development, less than a mile away, on the north side of Franklin Road, from Puckett all the way to Ammival, and some of those are for sale right now. There's available development there, and Ammival Road is going to be developed, I know, from there to eight forty. There's neighborhoods going up, schools going up, and other storage unit facility going up down there. So there's a lot there. And then if you look, you know, I know a lot of this kind of can sometimes seem petty, and, you know, well, it's her property, let her do whatever she wants with it. But when you look at the Library of Economics and Liberty, and you look at a society as a whole, a quote I pulled from that was, "No matter who the owner is, the use of a resource," in this case, land, "is influenced by what the rest of the public thinks is the most valuable use." Right now, we value that use as agricultural and rural. We really value it. It's beautiful. Go to the next slide, please. This is a picture of the proposed site. It's gorgeous. Mrs. DeLonge has done a beautiful job remodeling this house, from the back, from the front. It, it's very pretty, and the surrounding land with the trees, those trees in the fall, they're, they're bright yellow and orange, and they're gorgeous. But if you look at the next picture, and these are from a storage unit facility Mrs. DeLonge already owns in Dyersburg, if you notice, the logo's the same. Now, I will say that she has the plans to put in the masonry walls and to put in the landscaping, but regardless, it's still a storage unit facility that's going in, that's being proposed. So compared to that first picture, and then what we're looking at is going to be there, you can see where we would have some concerns. If you go to the next slide, which is your second objective, to maintain the community's rural character, I will maintain that the best use of this land is to continue its current zoning and preserve the community's rural, rural character. A storage unit facility here is not consistent with the current land use. If you do look, though, you guys, there we go, thank you, the Nature Walk subdivision that's going in, one hundred and sixty-five families moving in, you did such a great job, I was following that on getting the permitting and things, so that the creek bed is preserved, and the houses are built around that. I can't wait for that neighborhood to go in, I'm sure we'll take long walks in the park with that neighborhood and those families coming in, that's beautiful. We have single-family homes being built on Baltimore Road and Deer Run Road. We have a little mini goat farm out there. We have people who own horses and cows and other livestock. We have school buses that are individually owned and stored on private property out there. We have tractors that are individually owned and stored on private property out there. All of that is in keeping with the current zoning. Objective number three is to encourage good design. Clyde, with the Huddleston Group, he's done the best he can with what he has to work with, but the community has had concerns since the beginning, before he came along, about light pollution, about noise pollution, about the masonry walls. Really, they're not in keeping with the current design out there. We don't have neighborhoods with the big marquees and the gated entrances, so the masonry walls are great and the landscaping, but everything where, where she's talking about putting this facility is a lot more, what's the word I'm looking for, organic? There's not really a lot of that kind of structured setup. So we're also concerned about the light pollution with the signage and the storage unit lighting. Now, her units, they're looking at individual lighting over each individual thing. So what we're looking at getting then is a lot of lights popping on and off, on and off, on and off, with movement, you know, in and out of the facility, which happens a lot on the weekends, as we know, which is my next point, increased weekend traffic, more storage facility traffic is on the weekend. Residential traffic also increases on the weekend, and it's more sporadic. So when you look at the use of the road in that area, with the one hundred and sixty-five houses being built right there in that same spot, they're practically right across the street from each other, you've got a lot of new traffic going on right there. I mean, it's, it's not even a quarter mile away, it's right there. So, objective four, this is a picture of an accident that actually occurred just a couple of weeks ago, and this is, as you can see, they can't even get off the road because that minivan is tipping, because there's no shoulder, and the road just drops off. This happened right, right there, and I'm going to show you here in a minute, a graph, actually, you can go ahead and go to that, just, I want to, don't want to take up more of your time. This is from the Titan database, and what this is showing you, the blue is our area, our little stretch of road from Coleman Hill to McNeil, just our little stretch of road right there, and the orange is Kingwood to Brinkley. The reason I compare these two is because Kingwood to Brinkley used to all be nothing but rural, nothing but residential, and we've got veterans come through there. Well, when veterans came through there, you can see the spikes. And then when Overall Creek was built, you can see the spikes. And then when Kroger was put up, you can see the spikes. And if you look at the blue, which is us, you know, you have an ebb and a flow, but look at the last one, this year in two thousand and sixteen, a dramatic spike, double, because the flow of traffic heading the direction toward Kroger and heading toward Overall Creek has doubled, and it's fifty-five miles per hour out there. I didn't mention that before, did I? It's fifty-five miles per hour out there, and there are no traffic lights, so do you think traffic stays at fifty-five miles per hour? No, it does not. I mean, we see them zipping past. Actually, they go from forty-five miles an hour to fifty mi, I get so frustrated with the people going forty-five miles per hour, because it's fifty-five people, but, you know, that's even a hazard, because they're going too slow. And then we have those ones that zip along. There was another car accident, one of our ladies here, a young person was driving along, he was eating something, didn't see her as she was coming out of Deer Run, and bam, it's happened multiple times. So, we have another gentleman that's going to go further into this next slide, but I just want you to see that the sight distances are a real challenge. I hope you've understood that at this point. Okay, last one. And you can call me a tree hugger, you can call me the Lorax, but the environment here in that area is a big deal to me. We, I consulted Dr. Albert Ogden, Professor Ogden, he's retired now, but I consulted him, I consulted with Keith Filson, a geologist in this area, and John Frer, who is a spelunker, and they came out, and they did some exploration, they did some looking, and according to them, there is a proliferation of sinkholes and surface cracks in that whole area. You guys know, twenty-five years ago or so, that dye tracing that they did from Snailshell Cave and the watershed, all in this area, and now they've got Cow Crap Cave and all those other caves that they've been finding. This area, if you just keep going, with the natural underground water drainage systems and the water drain-off rate from the storage unit roofs, this is a real concern. Right now, there's a lot of porous material, so when we have the water, the big storms come, it sinks right in, yeah, it goes down to those sinkholes, but I mean, it's gone, you know, and it moves on. But if you remember the Easter flood, wow, Franklin Road was stopped up in that whole area because of the watershed and because of, you couldn't get past it. So if we're looking at putting storage unit facilities there, and all of a sudden, when it rains, you have a flash flood type of an effect happening, because water's hitting metal roofs and concrete and asphalt, instead of the porous material that's there now, the ground, the gravel, and all of that. So if you introduce that flash flooding into this area because of the sinkholes and the surface cracks, you're going to see damage, you're going to see a repeat of what happened Easter a few years ago. That was crazy. I looked into the Southeastern Cave Conservancy and the Nature Conservancy of Tennessee, I called them, talked to a couple of them, and just a quote from that, Professor Ogden and Mr. Filson, they both said they can't definitively say we're part of this nail shave system, but they did say that we were definitely part of the karst system of that area. And if you look at this quote from the Southeastern Cave Conservancy, it says that the most, that this area is the, one of the, is the top ten most endangered karst communities by the Karst Waters Institute. And the primary threat to the caves include factors related to the encroaching sprawl and development from the nearby city of Murfreesboro. So is this one facility going to cause all this crazy damage? No, probably not. But you open the door by allowing this in here, here, in this area, you open the door to other frontage properties going, and that's probably something you don't want to do until you've widened the roads and put in the appropriate sewer and put in the turning lanes. Once that happens, there we go, we're set. I'm just really nervous about everything happening in the wrong step, in the wrong process. The last thing I really want to focus on is just sustainability. Within five miles in each direction of the proposed site, there are at least five existing storage unit facilities and more purported to be coming soon, like the one on Ammival Road, and then another on Veterans. It's Storage Solutions at Kelton's, A-plus storage on Forest, Fortress, Pac Rap Mini Storage on Brinkley, Salem Glen Self-Storage on Glen Side, and Franklin Road Mini Storage on Franklin Road, which is two-point-four miles away. And I really, I called them this morning, because those guys are really cool. They've already been proactive enough to go ahead and put a hundred and, get the rezoning or the permission to get a hundred and fifty more units at their existing facility in order to be proactive and provide for the new neighborhood that's going in. I think that's great, I'm really excited for them. I talked to them this morning, because originally it was a hundred and forty, and he said he actually bumped it up to a hundred and fifty. So we have a hundred and sixty-five new homes being built, a hundred and fifty more units going in, two-point-four miles down the road. So the last slide, I really just wanted you to take a look again at what it looks like now, and, you know, just remember that all we're asking you is to just consider, what does the proposed storage unit facility bring to our community that will positively enact the county's long-term land use goals for this part of the Rockvale area? Thank you.
All right, who is, would like to speak next? Thought there was someone coming from the area. Come forward and give us your name and address, please, sir.
Mayor Burgess, Commissioners, my name's Clyde Roundtree, I'm with Huddleston Steel Engineering, representing Mrs. DeLonge, the client in this particular project. And I just wanted to go ahead and do our PowerPoint presentation, it kind of helps kind of broaden the picture that Mrs. Baltimore just testified to. And again, I would like to say we appreciate the neighbors, this has been more than an interesting zoning case, there's a lot of passion around this project, and I would respectfully like to ask at the close of the public hearing if I could go ahead and make a final statement. But with that in mind, if you can go ahead and hit our PowerPoint, Doug, that'd be great, or wherever it's coming from. As far as, you know, one of the concerns with mini storage is, you know, it's, it's something that some people are for, some people are against, but I just want to paint the picture, Mrs. DeLonge bought this piece of property many years ago with the intention of developing it for mini storage. And that's something I think is really, really important, because one of the things I think we're walking into, and I think Amy mentioned it very well, is that this is, this is an area that's under a lot of pressure. There's a hundred and sixty-five homes across the street, there's mini storage down the street, and there's multiple commercial properties down, down the corridor as well. There's six thousand people a day that drive this corridor, it's a growing area. Miss DeLonge bought this area doing her demographics, understanding the business model that she wanted to accomplish at this location, so she didn't buy it just for a residential home, she bought it for mini storage. Now, the challenge is, is that it was sold by Mrs. Baltimore's family, the family that is opposing any sort of development is the same family that sold the property. As a planner, I always said the best solution to solve your problem is to buy it. If you want to keep development from happening, buy the property, make it a park, that's what everyone wants. But the fact of the matter, Mrs. DeLonge bought this with the intention of developing it, and I think that's really important for us as a planning commission to understand that if you have an urban corridor that's been identified with six thousand cars, you know it's going to grow. So she didn't buy this haphazardly, it wasn't a whimsical idea to go ahead and put mini storage on this piece of property, so that's really the point. As far as the neighbor's concerned, mini storage may not be the most desirable neighbor in many ways, but in terms of a lot of the concerns that she has, it's a great neighbor. First off, as far as safety's concerned, mini storage is the least impacting commercial use that you're going to find. It's less impacting than a residential use. If you compare a mini storage, this is planned to have three hundred units, that basically is twenty-one trips a day at full build-out on this piece of property. If there are residences put there, it would double the number, at least forty-one trips per day if there are residences. And I doubt many people are going to build a nice, single-family home with a driveway on Highway ninety-six, so I don't even think that's really an option on this particular piece of property. As far as the next slide's concerned, you know, it's always been an increase of traffic, and that area's just going to continue to grow with traffic. But safety has really been brought up multiple, multiple times, and yes, the road does have shoulders, yes, it's a two-lane road, but, but there's six thousand people that ride that road a day. There's been about thirty-two accidents that have been presented over the last few years in that particular area, four that were more related to our particular area, but I don't want to get into the whole traffic report, there's a lot of information about traffic on this particular site. If we go to the next slide, is, just keep on going, I'm sorry, I'm just going to move through this pretty quickly, next one, there we go. Can a road safely sustain the traffic? And I think this is really important, because I'm not sure how many of you had a chance to drive the actual corridor and see this particular site, but we have some exhibits on sight distances, so if you can hit that next exhibit, that'd be great. Basically, there's thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-two feet, basically from the access point where Mrs. DeLonge is planning on putting her access road to the facility. That's one direction, thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-two feet. Let me show the next exhibit. And if you hit the next one? That's the, that's the hill that they're concerned about. That picture's taken from where the access road will be for the new storage facility. So you can see, the road that Amy's mentioned is Baltimore Road, and that's the road right over here, but that's coming out of the driveway, and I don't really see any concerns, and we had our traffic engineers look at this, and there's no visual concern where our, where our access point's going to be, so I wanted you to see that. That's looking west, looking down ninety-six. If we can go to the next slide, please. Now we're looking east, down ninety-six. Next slide, please. This is at her driveway, looking back, there's the hill that's been mentioned, there's no doubt there's a little bit of a trough, but her access point will be on the peak of the road. It actually has excellent sight distance. County staff has already said it has excellent sight distance, so I really don't think it's an issue of safety on this particular road. Yes, there's a chance someone's going to stop, yes, there's a chance someone's going to text, yes, there's a chance there could be an accident that would happen on this road, but it's not the result of an unsafe road nor a result of sight distances. And just to kind of make a point, I hate to do this, but it's just a fact, there are clear sight lines in both directions for this site, and a case in point's the next slide. On Baltimore Road, there is a bus business, that they run the buses a few times a day out of this particular site. If it was a dangerous road, I wouldn't be running school buses on this particular site. There's over fifty-four hundred trips over the last three years with buses pulling out, and as you can see, no turn lane, opposing lane, up to the hill, happens every day. So the fact of the matter is, the argument is that it's an unsafe road, but it's being used every day in a situation where a bus, in my opinion, is probably the worst-case scenario. Keep on going, if you would, please. Next. And impact on the rural life, and, and this is from a planning perspective, we're hearing this everywhere, Murfreesboro, Rutherford County's definitely changing, and, and, and I've got to credit Mrs. Long, and I'll do this in my concluding statements, but the fact of the matter, she did, she did really good research on demographics, on where the best place to put a storage facility would be, and ninety-sixth corridor is a corridor that we really need to respect. It's our access to Franklin, as we mentioned, it's going to Williamson County, there's six thousand people a day, it's an access point to eight forty, it's a road that's going to change radically over the next few years. Along the road right now, hit the next slide, please. There's an auto repair shop, there's a pools company, there's a landscape company, there's a motorcycle sales, there's a construction company, all these exist along the ninety-sixth corridor currently. Before, the neighbors had an argument that there's never been any development commercially on the south side of ninety-six. I really don't think that's an argument we really should set precedent for. If we're not going to develop ninety-six, let's not develop ninety-six. If an urban corridor is not for development, then let's not develop it, but I think we're basically setting a precedent that I'm really concerned about, especially saying one side of the road can be developed, but not the other side. So with that in mind, I just wanted to help you understand a little bit more, and kind of in a rebuttal to Mrs. Baltimore's presentation, as I mentioned at the end of the public hearing, I'd love to speak in terms of any more concerns that the neighbors may have, but thank you for hearing my, my presentation. I'm available for any questions now, if you have any.
Proponent for the applicant, anyone wish to ask him anything? All right, then, sir, thank you. Was there a question there?
Okay.
Oh, he can't ask questions from the audience, he can speak. Those that wish to speak may continue to come forward and make your comments.
My name is Kenneth Baltimore, three sixty-three Baltimore Road. My name is Kenneth Baltimore, 363 Baltimore Road. I'd like to correct her on the purchasing of the property. She did not buy it for my family. She brought it from Eddie Keith. She's wrong on where the lawyer has got the two arrows showing the road. The one going out west is the driveway. Just above the hill is Puckett Road. You cannot see out of Puckett Road going either direction. The one back towards town is showing the subdivision before you get to Deer Run, and you can hardly see Deer Run coming out of there. She's wrong on both places there completely. It's unsafe. I just don't feel that she's concerned about the safety of that neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Come forward and give us your name and address and make your comment.
Dr. Stephen Nutt, I'm a chiropractor in Murfreesboro. I've been living here 30, about 32, 30 years. I've been living out there for 30 years, and I've watched it grow. I've watched the accidents get more and more. It's almost every night I hear an sirens now out there. I've treated patients that have been injured out there. One case specific was sued by the, sued, the city was sued because a police officer rammed two kids from MSU, MTSU in the back coming over that hill. That was about 12, 15 years ago, before all this construction. I'm really concerned because, one, I would not turn into that driveway, the Baltimore's, and back up without being feared of being hit by a car coming over that hill. There's also other hills behind there, and there is, there are buildings, businesses on the right side, the pool company and all, they're further down and they're over that hill. I don't think they should be there, to be honest. I think that's a very dangerous place for them. I actually myself was in an, almost in an accident where my whole family, I felt, would have been killed. I don't know what happened, but something made me come off the road. I was going over the hill behind that and actually passed where the businesses are now. And I was going over that hill, coming up the second hill, and something told me to swerve off the road. And I did. And a kid, I don't know how, it looked like a kid driving, doing probably 90 to 100 miles an hour, which is typical out there, came over that hill, and if I had not bared off, they would have hit me head-on and would have killed us. It's very typical. I don't understand why, and, and I, we've got a great police department. I'm not going against the sheriff's department, but why these kids are flying 100 miles an hour out there. It's constant, especially in the mornings, evenings, passing cars, going around cars. It scares me to death to drive it. When my kids were growing up, luckily they're old enough now, they've moved away from there, it scared me every morning when they, I was worried they were going to have a wreck. If you didn't look to the right and really slow, pay attention pulling out of McNeil Drive, you had a good chance of being, being killed. And there was several, there's been several accidents there. That's just right up from where they're at. But one of the commissioners had asked a question about 231. That's flat. It's totally flat going out through there. There's no, not even comparison. Out where we're at, it's all hills. You've got people trying to get to work to Franklin in the mornings that are flying, they're passing cars. It's ridiculous. It's just, it's really bad. If this was a four-lane highway, I would say, I'd sit down, I'd shut up. I've been wanting this for years. If this was developed four-lane highway, we have no problems. But it's not. It's like she showed you on that picture. And the people that live out that way, it's, it's, it's a mess. And it's needed to be developed for over 10 years now, and, and it hasn't been. But now we're bringing businesses out that way. So I just have a big concern about that. And, and there's a big safety issue, and that's what I'd like to say. And I would, I just hope that maybe that, one, we could increase our law enforcement out there. I know they, they're out there a lot, and they do a fantastic job, but we need more police out there stopping these guys. I don't know how many times I've, just two days ago, I came home and there was a car swerving, going around me. I, that kid was doing 85, 90 miles an hour. And it happens all the time. I don't understand why it's not being stopped. And I don't understand why we're not having four-lane from Murfreesboro to Franklin. And then maybe we could do some development out there. But before that, we don't need any development out there. Thank you.
Next, who else would like to speak?
My name's Michael Graham. I live at 1120 Deer Run. Is there any chance we can get the slide 11 from the original PowerPoint up? With the site distances?
That on Ms. Baltimore's presentation?
To the Commissioners and everyone else up here, I would just like to say God bless y'all for, for doing this because I'm an IT guy. I'm way, way out of my comfort zone right now. There was, you know, through all this discussion and, and the planning and the proposals, if I was you, I would not, I would not, I would be tempted also to approve this because you've seen presentations that, that talk about the growth in the corridor and how we can support this. You've also seen the, the pictures of the sight lines and have been told that there is no safety issue. The safety issue has always been...
There you go, Brian.
Thank you very much. The safety issue has always bothered me because I live on Deer Run. I drive out of that road every day. And this picture is not what I'm seeing. When, when they talk about the sight lines and that you can see 1,300 feet, that is from the access point of the storage units. From Deer Run, if you look at this, the black line up there represents the sight line to the crest of that hill. That is 236 feet. The stopping distance, according to the federal, the Highway Administration, traveling at 60 miles an hour is about 280 feet, and at 70 miles an hour is 361, I believe, which are those red lines up there. So a car coming over the crest of that hill, those red lines are showing how long it's going to take them to stop, which is well past Deer Run Road, and that is in ideal conditions. That is not in the rain. And everyone on Deer Run Road knows that. When you pull up and you want to turn left, you have to count seven seconds to see who's going to come up over that hill. There is no line of sight between those roads. According to the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation, there is a minimum requirement at an intersection on a two-lane undivided 55 mile-per-hour road, which is this road here, that it should have a minimum sight line of 610 feet. The sight line from Deer Run is 240 feet. That is well below the safety limit set by the State of Tennessee. The sight line to that crest from Baltimore is 415 feet. That's also well below the limit. According to the, the State of Tennessee, these roads could not be built today because these intersections do not meet the safety requirements set by the state. And the reason is, is because of the hill that's in between them. This whole section between Deer Run and Baltimore Road, according to the state, safety specifications, is not a safe road. If these roads were to be built today, that, that hill in between would have to be leveled to clear sight between them. That's not something that you see when you're, when you're showing the pictures up there from the access point because the access point is on top of the hill. I would love to be able to leave my house every morning and take my left turn out of that access point rather than Deer Run. And I feel this has been, something that has been neglected amidst all this talk. We, we've brought this issue up over and over again, and it seems like every time it's dismissed. We're told there's clear lines of sight, and you've heard the residents, you cannot see out of those roads. We're told that, well, there's really not that many accidents. Well, I don't want to be the next statistic when somebody is looking at accidents. And I think if no reason for anything else, this road between Baltimore and Deer Run does not meet requirements set by the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation as a safe road. And with that, I, you know, I expect the, the Commissioners that represent me to take very seriously this decision because of the safety issue raised. It's not to be taken lightly. And I do respectfully request that this, this rezoning be denied until a proper due diligence can be done on the safety issue of this road and a proper assessment can be made of the risk that is there and, and how to address that and how to bring this section of the road up to state requirements before anything else is developed. Thank you.
Is there someone else that wishes to speak?
My name is John Weary. I've known Bev DeLong for about 10 years professionally. I've heard a lot of talk here, and one of the things that bothers me is the neighborhood says, gee, this road is unsafe and therefore this storage unit shouldn't be allowed because it might have some extra traffic. But yet, housing developments with 165 houses on several different locations should be allowed, and they would have significantly more traffic. If the traffic is a problem for the storage building, then the traffic should be a problem for the other developments which the neighborhood says they want. Another problem I have is they're talking about Baltimore Road and Deer Run Road access, and if it's not safe, then why shouldn't those roads have their access denied and their entrances moved? They've said that the entrance and access, access from this storage unit has significantly more visibility. Therefore, the visibility from Baltimore Road and Deer, Deer Run Road really shouldn't be an issue. Mrs. DeLong has a storage building in, in another town, and she's worked with the city and worked with the planning commissioners to significantly improve that and make it an asset to the neighborhood. She would do the same thing for this storage facility and work to address any concerns that, that they have. What I hear the neighbor saying is, this is a main access between Franklin and Murfreesboro. It eventually will probably be developed as commercial, but we don't want it developed as commercial now. If they want to have non-commercial, pastoral, so forth, it should be off the main drag, not on the main drag. Since there already is commercial there, Mrs. DeLong should not be denied the right to use her property in the same manner as adjoining properties are being used.
Who else would like to speak?
Nick Tepley, 938 Deer Run Road. And my main concern is for the safety. It has, that point has probably been beleaguered a little bit. We've lived there about three and a half years, and a number of folks have moved into the neighborhood, moved out, whatever. One thing that was addressed, or not maybe really addressed quite as much, is a storage, and the nature of a storage facility is, for, a storage facility is mainly for transient people. People who are moving into the area, people who are moving out of the area. They have an apartment. Maybe they're going to be storing some stuff until they move into a house. These are not people who live in the Deer Run or Baltimore Road neighborhood. These are people who live further away or who are new to the area. They will not be familiar with, as Mike Graham had pointed out, the dip in the road, the delay, the seven-second delay. They won't be familiar with that. You're going to have people there who are helping others, you know? They're helping their brother-in-law move. They're helping other family members, friends, buddies move. They're not going to be familiar with that. So when they pull out, going 5, 10 miles an hour onto that road, and a car comes over the crest into the dip where you don't have visibility at the top or the bottom of the road, they won't, they will not see that, that other traffic. Mr. Baltimore runs some buses out of there. Mr. Baltimore has lived there for years, and you mentioned the bus being, it's bright orange, you can't miss it, and it's really tall. What if you have a shorter vehicle that is, you know, not as high a profile? You're going to, you're going to, you're going to, you're going to hit that, especially with people flying through there, maybe sending text messages, 70 miles an hour, smack. My main concern is for my own family. My son will be driving in about two and a half years. I've got five other kids, two years apart. They will be driving. I'm concerned, and I've told people who visited us and other folks, hey, watch as you come out of Deer Run because there's a dip in the road. That storage facility could go a lot of other places in the Highway 96 corridor and be just fine. That storage facility would probably be able to be fine right in that, in that same section, should the road be graded, should it be widened, should there be a turn lane at the very least? We don't see any of these things. And so because of that, we are opposed to this. That's what brought us out here on a Thursday evening.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please give us some new information.
Thank you, guys, for listening to this. I know a lot of, it sounds like a lot of broken records going up here, and we all do have the same concerns. And I, I wouldn't be right for me not to say just a little something about safety, but I'll try to keep it, I'll try to keep it at a minimum. But my name's Chris Moore, and I live at 8597 Franklin Road. This is adjacent to the property that we're discussing here, to the site. My wife Pam and I moved out there about 13 years ago specifically just to raise our children in a rural residential setting. That was the reason that we went out there. So as most of you know, I'm very opposed to this, opposed to this storage facility. It was first presented to me by, by Ms. DeLong that she wanted to build, and I quote, a few storage units on the far side of her house, which is quite a ways from my house. So a few months later, she called me and asked if she, if I could come over and look at her proposed site plan. And I was shocked to find out that her few magically turned into, I believe it was around 600 units. And most, the majority of these were about 50 feet from my bedroom window. And so needless to say, I've had, I've had a hard time with it from the beginning, just, just from a trust standpoint, to be honest with you. And although I'm certain it'll, it'll greatly diminish the value of my home, my foremost concern is still the safety. As, as he said, I have twin girls, just started driving, they're 16. I just, my wife, we just kind of laugh, say we pray them up every time they leave because it's so dangerous pulling out of our driveway. I had a, I just want to give you, the folk, some of the folks that are speaking don't live in that area, and they don't really understand. Some of them do. But I live, the bowl that we're talking about, it's, we just kind of call it a cup where it comes down and goes up. Bev's on the, on the top side there with her, her facility. And I was, one, one day I was, I was pulling out, and just like the gentleman before, I just, just, I just happened to look down just for a split second, and I looked up and there was a guy right in front of me. He had to have been doing 90 miles an hour. If I, if I hadn't have hesitated, I'd have been dead right now, without a doubt. I passed a gentleman the other day, had to be doing at least 100. I've never seen anybody driving so fast. It was directly in front of the proposed site where, where the driveway's going to come out. So, so definitely concerns, just with higher rates of speed and no shoulders. So I'm going to, we've also had, you know, a couple of accidents since this, this planning commission started, there's been two, I think two, it could have been three wrecks between, right in, right in that area. The one that she showed the other day was literally two weeks ago. So, so that should speak to the fact that we have, you know, we have valid concerns. We're not just being difficult in trying to stop traffic. We're trying to stop progress out there. We're really, 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 really concerned. So another concern I have is the water displacement personally, which really hadn't been talked about. And I have, where originally the, the proposed site beside my house is, is actually a retention. It's about a three-acre piece of property there. And when it comes to rain, and I really don't think Bev has ever seen this since she's been out there, because I don't, I don't think we've had a rain, but we've been out there about 13 years. And it, literally, I've seen it up within a couple of feet of my house. It's a three acres. It's probably two-thirds fills up with water. Someplace it's five or six feet deep. Enormous amount of water goes into that. Everything in the area runs into that loop. Now, that's to the side of where she's talking about. She has one pond in front of her, in front of her facility there that she's talking about running the water into. And that really does concern me because I'm, I'm not convinced that that can hold that amount of water that, that's running off there. And as Amy said a minute ago, you know, our concern too is when you, when you add tin roofs, asphalt, those kinds of things, it tends to just cause more of a flash issue than just the water seeping into the ground and running off normally. So... So if that fills up and goes over, it's going over the road right there, which is incredibly dangerous. There's nowhere for it to go other than over 96. So that's another one of my concerns. The last planning commission, we were all a little bit surprised to find out after Commissioner Gooch had supported us and signed our petition that all of a sudden he had thrown his support behind this project. And we didn't really know that until we showed up. My wife actually talked to him, just kind of asked him why this would change his mind. And a few things that he said to her were not enough signatures from the first to the second petition, that he felt that the objections may be kind of diminishing. The second was that Mr. DeLong had been trying to make changes to her plan to accommodate our concerns, which she has, and that it was inevitable that growth has come into the area, and that he feels like it would be the lowest impact on the neighborhood. So I'd like to quickly address these real quick if I could. Number one, not enough signatures from the first or second petition. So in our first planning commission meeting, we submitted a petition with 104 signatures from the neighbors who all highly objected to this being zone commercial. And the second meeting, we had a really short period of time. I personally thought that the impact of the first one, that we had over 100 signatures would pull away there, but I guess not. So basically, that's why we didn't present more signatures there. So tonight, I'd like to present a petition for, right at 200, we had somebody that didn't come, but we were right at 200. So we've got 198 signatures from the neighbors around here. Now, I want to make this clear with, the neighborhood is spread out. This is not a condensed, this is a rural community. This is not like you have neighborhoods, you can go door-to-door. This is the majority, almost, I don't know a percent, but if I had to guess, I would say this has got to be at least 90 to 95% of everybody that lives within a mile radius right there. So I would like to present this to you guys.
Good. Thank you, sir.
And so again, it just constituted an overwhelming majority, and out of everybody that I've talked to and the other people that I've talked to that were gaining these signatures, I have found not one person that is for this, not one in the area. To be fair, I've had maybe three, four that were indifferent, that just said, hey, I really don't know that much about it, I'm going to be honest, and not sign it. But not one person has said, I am for this project. And in fact, the only person that I know personally that's for this project would be Commissioner Gooch. So with all due respect, Mr. Gooch, you're kind of alone on this one, but I feel like we just needed to point that out. And so number two, you know, we do appreciate all the efforts Mr. DeLong's made to make changes. She has made an effort, but we really feel like, it's not as much about us as it is basically, she's a land developer, and this is her job, and we feel like she's just really more than anything, you know, yes, she may be trying to make some amends with us, but the end game is to overcome the obstacle so she can get this project pushed through. And again, this is what she does for a living. And she also knows this is incredibly unpopular, and I truly believe that she honestly cared about what the neighbors thought, that she would have stopped the project after our first neighborhood meeting because everybody in the room was against it, and she just kind of keeps pushing forward. And number three, that was inevitable that the growth is coming there, and we realize that additional growth is coming out this direction, it's going to happen, and we appreciate the fact that Trey feels that'll be low impact on our neighborhood, and I take him at his word that he thinks he's doing a good deed. And yeah, maybe more low impact than a Dollar General or a convenience market or something of that nature, but it'll be high impact on the folks who've moved that area to get away from city life, which is what all of us have done. And although we think it's probably inevitable that this area will have more commercial areas, we just don't feel like it's the right time based on road safety issues and location of the project. We just feel like it's the wrong project at the wrong time. So again, we feel like, you know, at a minimum, if nothing else, that the road should be widened, and we're really just asking for a sensible approach to growth. So we have been told by a few people that we don't have hired guns, we haven't hired lawyers, we're not having people speak to us, we're just kind of the folks, kind of trying to take up for ourselves a little bit here. But we've been told that we're probably at a disadvantage when a commissioner is not on our side, which is our understanding unless something's changed a little bit, as Mr. Gooch has decided to back that. And no matter what happens, we hope you'll respect the wishes of the community and the number of people that are against it, and we would hope that that would hopefully pull some weight, because even the nicest of intentions can sometimes be the wrong decision. And so no matter what the outcome tonight, Trey, we still respect what you do for the community, so I don't want to beat you up without saying that. We do appreciate you. And so I'm once again asking tonight that you guys would reject this request to reason on this property commercial. And just to recap, the reasons that we oppose it does not fit with the neighborhood landscape. Most of the commercial's currently on the north side, and we would just ask to keep it that way as long as possible. Really no need for additional storage units in that area. The area is flooded with that. The gentleman down the street just added 150 potential drainage issues. The highway safety, of course, that we beat to death here tonight, but mainly the overwhelming opposition to the project by the neighbors who feel it's going to ruin the integrity of the neighborhood and our current level of life. So we really appreciate you guys listening, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak.
Okay, are there others that wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Tim Stow. I'm a commercial real estate broker. I'm in my 32nd year of practice. I'm a landowner in Rutherford County, and growth is a natural thing. And the people that get affected most by that, at least them thinking negatively, are the people on the fringes where this property is located. That's not a reason to decline. One of the things that has not been talked about a whole lot this evening is the need for this project. I think one of the neighbors talked about how there were so many facilities within a short range. It's obvious there's a need for it. And the unfortunate thing is that the people who will eventually use these facilities, which I would, in my professional opinion, vehemently argue are not transient. As a matter of fact, I've used a storage facility myself for seven months, and I was not transient. If you call me transient between one house to another, that would be transient. But unfortunately, the people who are going to be using these facilities are not here to ask you for it. They don't know they're going to be using them yet. But there is a need for it, and this will fill that need very well. Most of the talk this evening has been talked centered around the safety of the road. I've traveled that road for 35 years. It's a crappy road. I do not like driving on it, and I do not like driving on it at night, but adding 12 trips a day to the 16,000 that are there, going by that property every day is so slight, it's hard to see how it could be endangering anybody. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Peggy Williams, and I've known Bev for a little over a year and a half, and I just would like to speak to her character and her level of excellence. Had the privilege of seeing what she's done to the property already. I was amazed. She doesn't cut corners. She takes a lot of effort to research. I've never seen so much research put together on a project and diligence to make sure that she is gathering the facts and making sure that she's creating a place that will be safe. And from what I understand, she brought in professionals to say, look at this, tell me, is this going to be safe for the community? Give me your opinion. Tell me what you think. So it was the opinion of the professionals that this was a safe place. My sister uses storage. She's used it for several years. She uses it because she was widowed, and her husband now was widowed, and they had too much stuff. And then they have kids that moved in, so they utilize storage units that they visit every year or two or three. So there's not a bunch of traffic, from my experience, with a storage unit. It's a place where you can put stuff because we collect stuff. And we have neighbors that are moving in, you have a whole community that's coming, so some people are going to be coming to the area, they don't know what they're going to do with all of their stuff, so they're going to get a storage unit. They might have kids who have left their stuff when they've become empty nesters, and they say, I want my space back, so they put it there. But as far as just knowing Bev and experiencing being with her, I've not seen her do anything without excellence or research, and she has one of the kindest hearts of some of the people that I have ever met. And I know that when she bought the property, she bought it with the understanding that she was going to build the storage unit. The people who sold her the property understood that that was her intention. She's remodeled and done an excellent job of preparing the house and making it ready, and it's done with excellence. So anything that she does, any storage unit that she makes, because she's done it before, she's going to have a skill set to do her very best to make it a friendly place for the area. Thank you.
Is there someone else that wishes to speak?
Hi, my name is Heather Macaron, and I live at 226 Deer Run Road. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I am very passionate about this proposal. I am a residential real estate appraiser. I've been an appraiser for 17 years, and it is common, obviously, value for properties will go down in the area because value is determined by location, obviously, for the first thing, and demand. And we've had issues where we've had some lots that have been for sale on Baltimore, and when we've had showings for those properties, as soon as people see the sign, the proposed zoning change sign, people have not wanted to purchase that area in that lot because they don't want to live. They don't want to buy acreage property and then have a commercial property right next door or right down. That's just not what the demand is. This area also, I think, I wanted to touch base at, I think there's some misunderstanding about the, people are saying, the turnout from Deer Run Road, you know, that it's not safe, which is true, it is very not safe. But I think what they're going at, if people are taking their trucks or trailers that are loaded and going down 96, and then they have to slow down to turn into the driveway, it's not the cars that are just turning out of Deer Run Road or Baltimore, it's going, all the cars that are driving from behind them that can't see them. I was just involved in an accident where I was rear-ended right in front of Deer Run Road. My car totaled. My eight-year-old son was in the car with me. It was a horrifying experience, and it's because everyone drives so quickly on that road, and when you're looking at there, there are no easily visible numbers on addresses on properties going up to that. So I can just imagine somebody who's driving on this road, even if they've driven down this road before, but have never been to the self-storage unit, and if they're looking for an address, don't know when to turn, don't know when to slow down, and when you're going 55, 60, 65 miles an hour, that comes up really fast, and you have to slow down pretty quickly to turn. And that is what unfortunately happens, and why I think there are so many accidents there. And most of the people who will be visiting a facility like this will be a lot of time driving a trailer or a truck that they're not familiar with driving, which can make it a little bit more difficult as well. So I just wanted to touch base on those. Thank you for letting me speak.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Again, let's don't be repetitive if you can help us, please.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jeff Lai, and previous resident in Rutherford County over the last eight years. I own multiple properties here as residential rentals have a concern. I know Bev DeLong. I've known her for eight years. She's part of a networking group, the Real Estate Investors of Nashville, part of a National Real Estate Investors Association. Her help with that is, it's a not-for-profit group. We're organized for networking and education. One of our mission statements for the group is the ethical practices of real estate development. She's been a mentor to me and helped me with my investment deals, but had a couple of concerns with what I've heard up here, one of them being values decreasing. True, if it's right next door, but this is a rural setting, she's going to have the type-two barrier, so the properties aren't going to be, I don't see a negative impact. I do see a positive impact with growth in the community, which I support, and that's only going to increase values. But also the type of property she's going to be putting in place, self-storage is a low-impact commercial use. Have a statistic that's only three visits per 100 units per day. Also, she proposed 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., so you're not going to have a lot of traffic or disruption, which seems like the biggest concern with everybody here is how it's going to impact the neighbors. Sounds like the traffic's going to be an issue regardless, but this would be one of the better types of commercial properties to put in place, and I'm all in favor of the growth.
Okay, next, who would like to speak?
I'm Randy Williams. I've known Bev for about two years, and I'm thinking if I was one of those 165 families and had a chance to have a storage facility instead of driving five miles, which some people feel is not safe, I'd sure like to drive a little closer. Raised three kids, and with three kids comes stuff, and you think you have a garage, but I didn't. I ended up just having a bunch of stuff, and glad they did good, graduated from college, and even when they left, they still left their stuff, so I still had to move it out eventually. But it just seemed like the safety of the people would be, if I'm buying a new home, if she bought a new home, that 165, I'd sure rather just be close and go somewhere across the street than I would to be driving five miles if this road is that dangerous. And I'm sure Tennessee's very, very blessed, people moving here, and you're going to have a lot more growth, which can be good, and things will be developed. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Elliot Hallam, local Realtor. I live at 4730 Garcia Boulevard. I've known Bev DeLong for about five years. Bev's an ethical real estate investor. She didn't buy that property only to make money. She bought that property to make the city and the county better. In addition to being a real estate professional, I'm also a small business owner. I have a landscape design business, and a young man that helps me with subcontracting, he rents space for his equipment at a self-storage facility. So I think Commissioner Gooch supported this proposal because it's going to help the city and the county grow and bring more jobs and revenue, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but the county needs more tax dollars, and we need it for our children and for the schools. Thank you for letting me speak. I support Bev.
I live at 1150 Deer Run Road, where I've lived for 24 years, and I don't doubt the character of me. And I don't doubt the character of Ms. DeLong, but so far, all the people that have come in her defense do not live in the area. Majority of them have been professional land developers, real estate agents, people of that nature. But ask you to consider that as you vote. They do not live in the area.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, there not being anyone else to come forward, we're going to declare the public hearing closed. Sir? Well, okay, you're going to have to get moving back there. I will keep it open then.
Evening.
And I'm going to have to cut this debate off here soon because it's been going on for more than an hour.
I'll make it very, very quick for you guys. Just wanted to let you know who I am. My name is Caleb Gibbs and I manage and operate a couple of independent pharmacies in the area. We use self-storage to help our business. And it's been well-established tonight. The sightlines are clear and the community will benefit. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Others that wish to speak, move forward.
Hi, I'm Mary Wester and I live on Nottingham Place. I've known Bev for over four years and I've never spoken publicly on behalf of someone before. But I wanted you to know that because of her character and because of how I respect her, that is why I'm coming forward. I've worked with Bev on the nonprofit board for over the four years and I've found Bev to be trustworthy and ethical. She has strong Christian values that make me pause and think about everything and they guide her in her business and her personal life as well. She's an experienced leader and I value her opinion and advice. And not only that, she's kind and giving. She's dependable and she does what she says she will do and she steps up to the plate when she's needed and she leads. That's the kind of person you want in your community. That's the kind of business leader you want here. She researches businesses truly and knows her statistics on the demand and traffic as it relates to self-storage. She's taught me a lot about that in telling me what's going on. And I took a class because of her. And I know that what the person said in the class, I heard from her as well and from a self-storage guru. Bev would not be investing in this project if there were no demand in the immediate area or if it's a negative effect on people's property value or safety. I'm hearing what you're saying in the back, but really, truly, she is concerned about that. As I know it, I want to tell you, I was listening to TV last night and the Nashville Metro Planning Commission came on and they evaluated a self-storage unit last night. The neighbors were saying the same things that the neighbors here are saying. They're concerned about safety. They're concerned about a two-lane road and they did not like the development that was going out their way. And it's moving that direction. It's moving out. This was in an area closer to Laverne or out that way, Percy Priest. Nashville neighbors don't like a lot of things and hundreds of people come out for those planning meetings in Metro Council to talk against those things. But the Planning Commission in Nashville and Metro realizes they have to do things appropriately. And they have to know that we are moving ahead and we are growing with all the people coming to this area. So the commissioners, they looked at it. Some of them actually use self-storage. And they said, the key factor and one of the reasons they're voting for it was that the traffic was negligible with a self-storage facility and would actually be better for the neighborhood than any other future development. Traffic would not be bad and the road issues were there, but that will be part of the future development of county. So if you want housing there, you will have a lot more people. That 6,000 people going through there will be bad. One thing I know is that I don't know any self-storage place that has a party and invites 100 people over for after weddings. I don't know of any kind of drunken parties that go on there where you have to worry about safety. I do know that there's very few people that go there and they typically visit their stuff maybe once a year. And in some cases, people die and never visit it. They just want to know their stuff's somewhere and people can't afford the huge, large houses. Those are the people that go in and put their stuff in self-storage. She lives on the property. I won't go into that again, but I do know she is very, very conscious of what her place looks like. And that place was a dump and when she moved in, she has turned it into something that is stable and very good. She will be an asset and I encourage you to approve this project and to vote for a great community and a great business.
My name is Bev DeLong and I'm the person who all this controversy is about. I just wanted to let you know that I'm a person. I'm not a corporation. I'm not a big conglomerate. I'm just a person. I'm trying to establish a credible business that will be an asset to this community. I have not changed my original intent. I made it clear from the start and I need you to support this. So I ask you, if you would, please to consider this rezoning request and vote yes. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay, we're going to declare the public hearing closed. With respect to request 16-8009, on behalf of Bev DeLong at 8461 Franklin Road, is there a motion on this request? Commissioner Gooch?
I'd rather be homesick with the flu. But I did get my flu shot at Walgreens, so I'm fine. Commissioners, I'll be brief, but those of you who know me know that I've had to struggle emotionally with this for quite some time. You know that. But I determined early on that I needed to think logically. And I don't doubt one bit the neighbors' concerns. Their concerns are true and real to them. If I felt like that this would change the quality of life sufficiently, significantly, I would take a different view. But as a commissioner, and I appreciate Mr. Moore's comments, but it's not that I'm for this or a cheerleader for this. It's just that I'm not opposed to it. I look at the corridor between Murfreesboro, Tennessee and Franklin and we all know what's going to happen. It's already happening. And to deny a property owner's ability to do what we, I think we all consider a least impactful business in this area. 6,000 trips daily almost now and it's going to add about 21 when it, 21 once it's fully Will there be accidents after this? Yes, there's accidents now. But I think that once we have the neighborhoods that are coming up now, once that we have more commercial, then what's going to follow? What's going to project this five-lane highway? It's going to be growth. So my motion is to approve with conditions.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Sorino and Commissioner Cushion, others may be. Discussion. Commissioner Allen.
I've been on the Planning Commission for 11 years and it's very rare for me to miss a meeting. And unfortunately, I had to miss the one that this was most recently heard at. We heard this presentation on August 10th, 2015. It was unanimous 11 to zero to deny it. We heard it again July 11th, 2016. It was unanimous 10 to zero to deny it. It came back this time as, previously it was applied for as commercial services. And a big objection I know that the community had was, you know, once you zone something commercial, it's zoned and there are many, many uses that can go on in the commercial services area. So I believe one of the concessions that was made was to bring this back as a PUD because that really limits what it can be used for. I don't feel like this is a true intent of what we zoned the PUD for. I'm just going to, I'm not going to read you the whole thing, just going to read you a couple of bullet points of the purpose of a PUD. A planned unit development is there to encourage innovative land planning and design to avoid monetary or monotony sometimes associated with large developments. It's there to provide flexibility in architectural design, use of open spaces, encourage the conservation of natural features, preservation of open spaces, to promote attractive and functional environments for non-residential areas that are compatible with the surrounding areas. I don't really feel like this design meets any of that criteria. What I have learned in 11 years is that on just about every one of these controversial issues, everybody's right. Everybody's right on the one hand that this is a very low-impact, you know, development. They're also right that the infrastructure's not there. They're right that it's urban corridor, but the, you know, when we determined that that was an urban corridor and developed the comprehensive plan, that's a 20-year plan. So it doesn't mean that it's got to be an urban corridor today and that all, you know, all zoning is appropriate there. You know, because with, with storage facilities, they can be controversial. So in most, all of our zoning areas, they are not a use-by-right. And in the land that she has, when she bought her property, it was not a use-by-right then, it's not a use-by-right now. That's why she needs rezoning. If you allow PUD, then she does not have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for an added layer of scrutiny. If she went through any other commercial services or another zoning like that, there would be an added layer there where she'd be required to get a special exception. So there are several reasons why this is advantageous to her. It's also advantageous, like I said, because of the limited use to the neighbors. But I just don't feel like it's consistent with what the intent was for the PUD. I feel like it's premature. I feel like the, the infrastructure's not there and the zoning is not there in the nearby area. Someone had mentioned that it was their adjacent properties that are zoned commercial. There are not. You know, the closest one is Amville Road. And when you get down to Amville, that area is in the Smyrna Urban Growth Boundary and that area has been zoned, anticipated to be used in their long-range plan for light commercial or for commercial and light industrial. So again, that would be a much more suitable use to be relocated to one of those. So anyway, that'll be the reason that I'm voting though. It's a very thoughtful decision. It's not just an emotional one, but I just wanted to share those, those bullet points with you.
Is there any other one that wishes to speak? All right, no one is raising themselves to speak. So we're ready to vote on the motion which is to approve this request. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
14 yes, 6 no. Motion passes.
Thank you for a healthy discussion. We will continue with the reports by standing committees. Let me see. Public Works and Planning has no report. Next is Steering, Legislative and Governmental Committee. So if several of you are going to exit, we'll wait just a moment or two and give some of these an opportunity to leave out of the room and we'll let it to move forward. for consideration. And Mr. Gooch is the chairperson there, as we all know. And without objection, we're going to let him go first and he's going to address 6C because they, then out of courtesy, he's going to allow someone else to do those first two. So he has chosen to go first and then announce that. So Mr. Gooch, would you please address the resolution to approve the process fulfilling the sheriff's vacancy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is a resolution to approve the process fulfilling a sheriff's vacancy. Whereas Chancellor William E. Young entered a memorandum and order on November the 14th, 2016, in a case style State of Tennessee upon the relation of James Robert Gann III versus Robert F. Arnold, Rutherford County Chancery Court Case Number 16CV1500, immediately suspending Rutherford County Sheriff Robert Arnold from performing any duties of his office pending a final hearing in the ouster proceeding without pay. And whereas the said memorandum and order refer to Tennessee Code Annotated 8-47-116 as to how to fill a vacancy in the Office of Sheriff. And whereas the ouster status appears to identify a suspension as a vacancy in office. And whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 847116 provides that a vacancy in office resulting from an ouster suspension shall be filled as the law provides for the filling of vacancies in such office. And whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 88107 provides in a relevant part that in the event that the Office of Sheriff becomes vacant due to death, resignation, incapacity, or other reasons, the duties of office shall be temporarily discharged by the chief deputy or administrative assistant or other highest-ranking member of the sheriff's office until the sheriff is able to resume his office or until the county legislative body appoints a successor as provided for in 51104B. And whereas the Rutherford County Legislative Body shall and hereby does declare there to be vacancy in the Office of Sheriff. And whereas the Rutherford County Legislative Body deems it appropriate and in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to exercise its authority and to appoint a successor to sheriff, to serve as sheriff as permitted by Tennessee Code Annotated 88107. And whereas the county legislative body shall make such an appointment to fill the vacancy with 100, within 120 days as provided by TCA 51104B1. And whereas any such successor must meet the qualification of sheriff as contained in Tennessee Code Annotated 88102. And whereas the statutory successor qualification requires a verification by the Peace Officers Standards and Training Commission post. And whereas the Rutherford County Legislative Body understands the post-commission has certain guidelines and time periods required for qualification under their internal and other regulatory requirements. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners as follows. The Board of Commissioners has determined that a vacancy in the Office of Sheriff exists and the county legislative body declares it is in the best interest of Rutherford County to exercise its statutory authority to appoint a person to fill the vacancy and serve temporarily as sheriff as permitted by Tennessee Code Annotated 88107 and applicable laws. Two, the process for appointment of a successor and the obligation of candidates wishing to be considered shall be substantially as set forth below, subject to variation as may be required by the post-commission and/or its internal guidelines and requirements. Post-commission qualifying package prepared and provided by the post-commission shall be available for pickup by any person wishing to be considered for appointment as sheriff at the Office of County Mayor on November the 22nd, 2016, or as soon thereafter as the same are received by the county mayor. A completed qualifying package must be returned to the post-commission by any candidate wishing, wishing to be considered within 30 days of November the 22nd, 2016, or the actual date the qualifying packet is available, whichever curls first unless another timeline is expressly established by the post-commission. A resume and a copy of the qualifying packet should also be submitted within the said 30-days period to the county mayor's office. The determination of whether any candidate has met the qualifications to be considered for the appointment should be made by the post-commission consistent with its practices. The post-commission shall have up to 14 days after the expiration of 30 days from the qualifying packet becoming available to review any completed qualifying packet returned becoming available to review any completed qualifying packet returned to it by a potential candidate. On or about January the 6th, 2017, or soon thereafter as reasonably pliable and/or in accordance with Post Commission requirements, the Post Commission shall publish a list of candidates it has determined are qualified for appointment and provide a copy of such list with other qualifying information it deems proper to the Rutherford County Clerk for filing with her office, who shall then send copies to each county commissioner. The Office of County Mayor may also send copies of other available information, such as a resume for each qualified candidate to each county commissioner. Provided the timelines set out in this resolution have been substantially met, then it is in the anticipate, it is anticipated the county commission will consider and in its discretion, select and appoint, and appoint a qualified candidate for appointment to the Office of Sheriff at its regularly scheduled meeting on January the 12th, 2017. The county commission hereby expressly retains the authority to vary or alter the schedule of requirements set out herein and to defer or vary its, its timeline for the selection and appointment of a candidate as it may deem necessary or proper in its discretion. The county commission may also suggest or mandate additional requirements for candidate selection that do not otherwise conflict with applicable law, such as, but not limited to, appearance at the county commission meeting to entertain and respond to questions and inquiries concerning the candidate's background and credentials for office. Any person appointed to the Office of Sheriff pursuant to this and a subsequent resolution shall only serve temporarily as such until Sheriff Arnold is reinstated. The county commission appoints a different person to serve the regularly scheduled election for the Office of Sheriff or otherwise provided by law. This resolution is resolved the 17th day of November, 2017. I so move, Mr. Chair.
I heard several, oh, here we go, Mr. Gurley and Mr. Turner, et cetera. Okay, so you've heard the resolution read in its entirety so that you can completely understand. It's on your iPads and, so what's your wishes and what's your comments? Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, I've spent a good part of the day on the phone with various individuals. This timeline that's set forth in, on page two of, of the resolution, I have a little bit of issue with it. I think there should be, and I'll probably be making an amendment that makes, provides for more flexibility. I'm not sure that this timeline is required by law. There's nothing in TCA that specifies this timeline. There is nothing in Post rules that requires this timeline. I talked to a member of the Post Commission who is also senior counsel for the Attorney General's Office today. Called him early this morning. He got back with me later on, around noontime. He said, "I can, I can get you something tomorrow." I said, "I need it by tonight." And so he called me back about four o'clock. And, and the mayor and I've had conversation on this. There is nothing in the rules. Apparently, this is something that they did when a sheriff died. And there was no necessary urgency. The department was running fine. There is nothing in law or Post rules that specifies this timeline. I think we need to get that in writing. And there needs to be some additional flexibility in this resolution to allow us to come back in a couple of weeks. Couple of different people I talked to today had the opinion that the appointment of someone to fill this vacancy is strictly up to the 21 members of this body. That's the only thing TCA, the only thing timeline that's put on there is we've gotta do it within 120 days, which is pretty far out. But that's the only timeline. We have to do it within 120 days. But there's no timeline set that we have to wait any particular time. Now, yes, those people, according to TCA, have to be qualified by the Post Commission, but a lot of those people are gonna be qualified by the Post Commission already. And I see no reason why this could not be expedited within a couple of weeks instead of dragging it out for six to seven weeks.
Well, I'm gonna defer a little bit here in just a moment to our county attorney. There is substantial flexibility here on us changing these timelines with the language that we've developed. Now respectfully, Mr. Gurley has talked to at least one or two of the members of the Post Commission, and they have told him there are not any rules. I have had multiple conversations with the Assistant Director of the Post down there that, and he has repeatedly told me, I do not have it in writing, but he has, these timelines that have been quoted here, he has repeatedly told me those, and he's going to send those to us Monday. Now, at that time, if we don't have this requirement for 30 days for giving our potential candidates an opportunity to submit, then we can revisit that, which we will do. But I really think, even if it's not a 30-day rule, I don't think there's anything out of order with 30 days, giving these people enough opportunity that may or may not be certified, at this point you might say, to fill all of these five or six things they have to do, including psychological examinations. I don't think that's an onerous request to include here, even if it's not a rule, but we'll confirm whether it's a rule or not. So Mr. McCreary, if you want to discuss some of the flexibility we've drafted in this document, please do that.
I'll address a couple of different things. First of all, as to timelines that are required by the statute, I think Mr. Gurley's right in terms of the requirement that the county commission make an appointment within 120 days. That is a statutory provision, so we know that timeline with certainty. There is one other timeline that I think may be relevant, and that is in Section 88102, where it is discussing the requirement of having obtained post certification from the commission. And it indicates in 9B1 that a person seeking the Office of Sheriff shall file with the Post Commission at least 14 days prior to the qualifying deadline, certain information. So that does kind of create a 14-day period where prior to the election or appointment, the candidates will have supplied this affidavit and other information to the Post Commission. You see that in the resolution in paragraph 2C, where it talks about the Post Commission having 14 days to review the applications. That's to build in that 14-day timeline for them to have an opportunity to review those applications once they are submitted to the commission. Beyond those two specific timelines, I don't think there are other statutory timelines. I know the mayor had some conversations with the Post Commission, and there, some of these are a result, I think, of those conversations, and then also just some practical inferences, I guess, in terms of allowing time to get the packets from the Post Commission that are required, an opportunity for the applicants to complete those packets and turn them into the Post Commission, and then for the Post Commission to have 14 days to analyze those. And when you factor all those in, you basically get the timeline that you're looking at here in your, in this resolution. That said, of course, you're, you're free to do what you wish to do with this particular resolution. We did try to factor in some squish into the timelines here, for lack of a better way to put it, by saying in several places, unless the Post Commission has created another date. And that was in part because it is at least possible, I suppose, as the Post Commission starts trying to supply the packets to the county mayor. There are some assumptions here that he'll get them on the 22nd. Well, if they don't arrive on the 22nd, you know, then the timelines could be off. So we tried to allow for some opportunity for the Post Commission to have flexibility by announcing different scheduling, and we tried to account for that in this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, the, I'm sorry, the reason I like this resolution is that it gives us time to do our due diligence and find the best person that we can for this appointment. If there was an emergency situation where we didn't have capable leadership out there, I could see us trying to kind of shorten that down. But I think that we do have capable leadership out there right now, and that this gives us time to, to pick the best candidate that we can and do our, the vetting process.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Just a question, does the county have a set time when a job opens up that we post it before? Or do we vary depending on the level of the job?
Ms. Stevenson's here, but I think we have flexibility on when we post it. Would you agree with that, Ms. Stevenson?
Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me, Mr. Gurley.
Yeah, I'd like to point out, we're not posting a job. We are filling a vacancy as required by law under TCA for a vacancy of the sheriff's office. So none of the employee handbook, the sheriff's employee handbook, or anything other than Tennessee Code Annotated and those applicable rules as specified in TCA that are required by the Post Commission are applicable in this. There's, there's nothing in terms of, we're not posting a job. We're filling a vacancy until such time as the sheriff is reinstated or the next election comes up. So there's no reason in terms of looking at-
Fair labor laws and all that, they do not apply in this situation. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. We've got three people here. Mr. Johnson's is up, and then we're gonna go with-
Following the proper procedure by standing up to be recognized. I agree with Commissioner Gooch. There's an old saying, haste makes waste. And I don't know of any, and pardon the pun, I don't know of anything that would dictate that we're under any kind of a gun to do this. I think we need to slow the train down and do our due diligence because this is a very important decision that we're gonna be making. So I support this resolution in the form that it is in. Thank you.
Commissioner Dodd, then Commissioner P.
If I may ask Commissioner Gurley a direct question, how do you propose to shorten it? Quicken the, expedite the packages or delay the time?
Mr. Dodd, respectfully, unless he wants to make an amendment, we don't need to ask him what he wants to do, okay? So let's just see how this progresses.
Thank you. I want to see how it can be shortened, perhaps. Can I in some way pursue that?
Perhaps someone will suggest that as this goes on forward. Mr. P, would you?
Well, just wanted to address the comments that, you know, this is not a job that's being posted. Then it's, all those rules are not applicable. And what I have to say to that is, common sense is always applicable. I want time to check the resumes of these people that are wanting to fill this very important office. I want time to check the references of the people that are applying. I want time to consider whether the commission itself needs to put stipulations on this job. Do we want to hire somebody that's gonna run for this office after this temporary term is up? Or do we want somebody that'll say, "I'll do this, and then I'll step down, I won't run again," at the end of it? I've got a lot of questions, and I think that the common sense approach to this is not to just dive in this headfirst. You know, we may, some of us may already have somebody we'd like to see in this position. But I think it's common sense for us to get the best person possible. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan.
Well, my question's a little bit different, and it may be a little premature, but it has to do with the resolution. What is the plan when we get to that point? If that's in January, does it go to Steering? Does it go to Public Safety? Does it come to the full commission? And if it comes to wherever it comes, is it the majority of the vote? The person with the most votes? A plurality? Supermajority? I just want to know some of the rules as we go, before we get here and we have six candidates. Somebody could be elected with three or four votes. Hopefully, I'm thinking we need at least a majority, if not a supermajority. But I'd just like, want to make sure we answer those questions now or soon so we don't get to that point and we're figuring it out as we go. Because like I said, I want to know if it's going to Steering or where it's going, and, and if somebody could explain that, I would appreciate it.
I can't answer all that, but this was discussed, it's Steering, and I believe that the discussion there centered on bringing it to the full commission at the next step. I think that's what was decided there. Now, how we decide who wins the, the election, we haven't really, I haven't addressed that. Maybe Mr. McCreary can help us, but we can certainly come forward with a solution. Likely that meets all the Robert rules of order.
That's probably something, yeah, I've not really looked at that. I will say that in the statutes that I have looked at in assisting the mayor in formulating this resolution, I'm not aware of anything and didn't see anything that would make me think that it's anything other than a majority vote. So I suspect that it's, that's going to be the outcome, that, that you will be determining this by majority vote. And to the mayor's point, this, the instruction from the Steering Committee was for the mayor's office to coordinate with the Post Commission and me in developing a strategy for moving this forward and a resolution. And that, that's what you're looking at, is that effort. So we took it as far as we were to take it, which was to develop a way to get it from here to there, which was back in front of you as soon as seemed reasonably possible in light of the information from the Post Commission.
And also, Mr. Commissioner, the motion does say that it comes directly to the county commission, not a committee.
I just know, depending on the mechanism used that night, there could be a lot of gamesmanship played on if you're gonna rank people one through four or whatever, and whoever has the most points, and people can lowball one and, and vote for people who they don't even want and different things. So I just hope we put a lot of thought into how that is done. We may have two people to choose from, we may have a dozen or more. And I just don't want to get into who's got the best game plan as far as whichever group of us, whether, wherever it is. I just hope we give a lot of thought to something that's fair across the board and, and we aren't making it up as we go.
Well, I think we would do our very best, and we will do this. We will determine what is the best approach, and we'll give that information out to you folks. And certainly you would agree or not agree with what our county attorney comes up with on that process prior to the deliberation of, of the process at the, at the time that you're choosing from those numbers of candidates that come forward. So this will be another assignment for Josh and us to work on seriously before we get to the next meeting, that we do this. Mr. Schaefer.
It's following up on what Commissioner Jordan said. I can see that we would get 20 people easily to put in for this job when you look at the amount of city police forces around sheriff's departments and the others that they'll put in for. There's a lot of post-certified, a lot of chief deputies, deputy chiefs, and all the way down through the police. Are we gonna bring 20 people in here and start interviewing them all at once? You know, are you better, we're gonna, if we do that, we're gonna have a lot of time if we don't have a way to vet them down to some point.
That's what the Steering Committee has recommended to this point. But you're only gonna get those that qualify. We may have 20 or 30 people, and all of them may or may not be qualified. Commissioner Kaplan.
First want to apologize for jumping the gun, making a motion on a second. I think I'm, speak for a lot of us when I'm, I'm ready to run through this and get this black guy behind us here, so. Commissioner Gurley, I appreciate the fact that you do want to expedite this. I gotta agree with Commissioner Jordan, and I may even ask my fellow commissioners to consider, with the amount of the qualified law enforcement I think that are gonna step up to this position, and with the magnitude of this choice with the county, we may want to even consider taking until the meeting in February and figure out a process to a one or two or three-step process to selecting this candidate. We've got to think about the holidays and what these individuals have to go through and what they have to submit between Thanksgiving, the Christmas holidays, family travel, including us as commissioners and the questions we're gonna have in vetting these people. us as commissioners, and the questions we're going to have in vetting these people. It seems like a very, very fast process to be selecting such an important individual, so I know it may not be popular, but we may want to consider giving us a little bit more due diligence time in making this decision.
Commissioner Turner?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess and Commissioners. I just kind of want to echo a little bit of what Commissioner Kaplan said there, because I think, at least for the most part, from what I think individually and probably collectively we've been told by our constituents, their big concern was the sheriff being suspended, and at least moving that off of our plate to where we can take our time to make some type of decision. And to echo a little bit about what Commissioner Jordan just said, and Mr. P, I want to be very clear, and I think Sean even touched on it, we can't, we've been through this for 18 months, and I think we owe it back to our constituents to be able to take this 90 days or 120 days to make the right decision. And I want to understand this a little bit better. This was the first time I've had a chance to look at this as a three-page document telling us what we can do, what we can't do, and not only on top of what Commissioner Schaefer just said, and the mayor just reinforced about we could have 20 to 30 candidates that might be post-certified and submit an application and come before the commission. I think, and Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, it also says in here that the commission can set some parameters that we would identify as being ideal on a candidate, that we want to move in that position if we don't see that. On number five there, it also says that the commission might appoint a different person to serve. So, if the individual, to Commissioner P's point, promises us they're not going to run for election in 2018 as the sheriff, and then all of a sudden down the road they say, "Well, I'm actually going to file my paperwork and run for sheriff," the commission would have an opportunity to remove that person if that was something we agreed to in the initial temporary hire. Is that fair, Josh? Is that accurate? If we got to that point, if the commission agreed that we don't want to appoint somebody that says they're not going to run, you know, run for election, and then they do run, is that something we could establish, among other things, as something that they could be removed from the temporary position, and then we would appoint someone new?
I would, I would probably want to cross that bridge when we got there, but I will say that this resolution was drafted in such a way, hoping to give the county commission as much flexibility going forward as-
And that was my next comment. That's, I appreciate your answer, and that's what I was hoping you were going to say, because we've got 21 individuals, and here we're going to have 21 different ideas about what this next sheriff needs to have, and something that I might value as something that we need to include in the hiring process. Commissioner Jernigan or Commissioner Cook might have down at number six, and I've got it at number two. So, I want to be able to build in some of that flexibility into this timeline for us to be able to collectively bring that forward together, whether through public safety or through the steering committee, where there's some sort of a commissioner proposal. To his credit, Commissioner Gurley came before the steering committee and did an excellent job on another proposal that he had, and we appreciated him doing that. That helps us to make a decision as a committee, but I think it helps the body as a whole. But the big thing, I think, for the vast majority of the county and our constituents and the commission as a whole was some sort of finality with what's going to happen with Sheriff Arnold, at least in the temporary, short-term, up until his federal date, and then we'll deal with whatever happens after that court case as it comes to fruition. But I'm confident and comfortable with this, and I certainly support Commissioner Gooch on this, and, and I had some reservations about it, because I had before, had previously said, you know, I think it might need to come through the committee, but Steering Committee in their wisdom said, "Hey, this affects everybody." And so, I feel like, in such short notice, I appreciate your work, and I appreciate the mayor's work on this. I think this is the best thing that we could do right now, to be able to move forward and have everyone be able to submit what they feel is acceptable for a candidate for sheriff, but it also gives us plenty of that flexibility, Josh, that you just mentioned, to be able to make sure we get it right. So, I'm appreciative of that, and I just encourage everyone, I plan on supporting this, and Commissioner Gurley, I appreciate his perspective and what he shared, but I think this is the best thing that we can do right now, because we certainly want to move with some expediency, but I don't think we want to sacrifice accuracy in making the right decision, just to say we filled a spot.
Mr. Gurley?
Yes, the point of my comments initially was not to not support this resolution. Thank, once again, thank Josh for his thoroughness in drafting this. The point is, was to, is that this body is the one that's responsible for this process, not the Post Commission, not anyone else. This body is, the 21 members of this body, we are responsible for filling this vacancy. If it takes two weeks, if it takes two months, we should do our due diligence and get someone. Things are not well at the sheriff's department. I've had multiple calls today. Things are not well at the sheriff's department. We just saw another indictment come down yesterday. I don't think that's the last. And things are not well, so we need to, we need to do this as fast as possible, but we need to do it right. Thank you.
It's Mr. Gooch.
This is more towards Josh, and I heard this mentioned, I forgot which Commissioner brought it up, but Josh, is it even legal for us to put a stipulation on a potential candidate or replacement to specifically ask them not to run for real, for the sheriff's election in 2018? Can we actually make that a stipulation?
Well, again, that's, that's something that's kind of beyond the scope of what I really have looked at at this point. The, unfortunately, this area that we're in, quite frankly, we're in a little bit of a no-man's-land. There's not a whole lot of authority out there that describes how a county commission is supposed to go about appointing a sheriff when one has been suspended under an ouster proceeding. And so, the, the best advice I can give is to go back to the statutes and try to apply them, as Mr. Gurley suggests, as best we can. There's some practical realities there, such as these individuals needing to complete packets and get them to post and so forth. But beyond that, there's not a lot of instruction on specific process that you might go through at a county commission meeting for the interview component of a process like this, or whether you would do it like you all might select somebody to serve on the planning commission or some other committee, or how exactly you go about that. And I think this body probably has some authority to establish some procedure that you may want to go by when you get to that county commission meeting. So, I don't mean to put it, turn that around, but in a sense, I think it, there is going to be a lot of flexibility for the county commission to create the, the process that you want to utilize at that point in time, and perhaps even create, I might not call it a stipulation, because I think I would be careful creating qualifications for the office of sheriff that do not exist in the statute. But whether or not you consider or ask a candidate what their intentions are with respect to running at the next election is, is a little bit different than that. That's not a stipulation, that's an interview question, and that very well may be fair game. I don't see anything in the statutes that would prohibit something like that.
A follow-up then to that, because you gave a great attorney answer to that, at least what I heard, because I'm of the opinion, if, if you appoint somebody and he ran, he or she ran, that would give them a leg up, perhaps, as a quote incumbent in the election. Others may not think that, but that's just my personal opinion. But did I hear you say that if you asked that question in an interview, "What are your intentions to run?" And whether they said, "Yes, I do intend to run in the election as the sheriff," or "I do not intend to run," we legally could not stop them, or we could not, in black and white, say, "We are going to appoint you interim sheriff with the stipulation that you can not run in the election of 2018."
I, I think you're, and so I tried to answer your question in a non-lawyer way right at the beginning of my long lawyer answer.
Just speak American.
What I was trying to say at the very beginning is, I don't know the answer to the question of, could you actually create a stipulation that would be binding on the candidates, that any candidate who's here today asking to be appointed cannot run for sheriff? And that's something that I would want to look at before we get to that point in time. And then I went into my soliloquy about there being very little evidence out there about how to go about this process. So, I'm happy to look at that question. My guess is, a good black and white answer that you might like will be tough to find, but I'm happy to, to look into that, and I understand the question.
I think a lot of us would like to know the answer.
Understand. Yes, sir.
Commissioner P.
Josh, having heard what you just said, on the second page, number four, if you read what you put there, or someone put there, kind of, "The county commission may also suggest or mandate additional requirements for candidate selections that do not otherwise conflict with applicable law, such as, but not limited to, appearance at the county commission meeting to entertain and respond to questions and inquiries concerning the candidate's background and credentials for office." Of course, the, I skipped the first sentence or two there, but I mean, it looks like you clearly said here that we do have the right to do this.
Right. Well, what I, as I said earlier, my intention here was to retain as much discretion and authority that I possibly could for the county commission going forward, and as it says here, that does not conflict with applicable law. Now, that's a pretty broad statement, admittedly, but as we look into this, there, it may be that there are some things that you cannot do, because they would conflict with applicable law, such as, and I'll give you one example that would occur to me as conflicting. There's a statute that sets out the qualifications for a person to be appointed sheriff, 88102. Suppose you decided that one of those just isn't going to apply? I don't think you could do that, because there's a statutory requirement that these qualifications must be met. So, for example, there may be things you could try to stipulate as a county commission that I think you, you know, would conflict with applicable law, but there may be additional conditions that you could put that may be acceptable. I'm just not prepared to address all the hypotheticals on that at this, at this point.
I understand exactly where you're coming from there, but being a commissioner, and we decided at steering as a group, that we'd let 21 of us decide instead of seven, because it's such an important position, I don't... I'll, I'll stop there.
Let's, let's think about this just a minute, timing-wise. You have a commission meeting in December, and we've already, you've already raised several issues that need much further review and analysis, and Josh, I'm sure, is making mental note of those at a minimum, and we give each of you an opportunity to make your list of things that maybe we haven't even thought about. You submit those to us and to our county attorney for review, evaluation, and discovery, and we will bring back findings, bring back maybe Josh's recommendations on, or answers to your questions, and we have a full discussion of that at the December commission meeting, and you'll be equipped then, maybe better, to address how you're going to proceed when you actually try to put in place the actual procedure to select a particular person through this process, if it turns out to be in January. So, we'll offer to do that and start that process. We've already started the process by just making note of what you're suggesting and asking questions about even now. Mr. Stevens is up, and then Ms. Cook, well, excuse me, Mr. Stevens, she can't get up since she has a, a bit of a foot problem. So, Ms. Cook?
The question I'm thinking-
Use your, use your mic there, please, ma'am.
The question I'm thinking about is, you know, we had an employee to run for sheriff, and he, he was elected, so we're going to have to watch how we put that in. Are you going to run for reelection if you're appointed? So, that's one of the things. We can't show favoritism, or, or we can't, you have to be careful with those guidelines. Also, can these questions be emailed to us?
Answers to the questions, you mean, that, that may, that we are developing, you've already started developing? Certainly, yes. And some of those things, Ms. Cook, that you're talking about, some of those are personal preferences, and some of those may be things that you're talking about that you can set as a particular requirement before you select the particular person. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The timeline that's set out here should be the absolute longest we take to study this, but folks, we kind of do have an emergency situation here. We have a jail that's on the brink of being decertified. We have a chief deputy that was just terminated today, who's under indictment. We have another one that was indicted yesterday. I've heard there might be more shoes dropping elsewhere. We have a serious leadership issue out here, and we don't need to push this off until February, March. If, when did you say that you were going to get the paperwork from the Post Commission with our deadlines, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if we, according to the way this resolution is crafted, the post people would, the applicants would have the 30 days, and the post would have the 14 days after that, so that would, they would hand that over to us with their qualified list on January the 6th.
You asked, or you had mentioned that there was a set of post rules that said we had to have a 30-day period.
I have been told that, I have not seen them in writing, but I have been verbally told that on two occasions now, but we may, that may not be correct.
And we put a contingency plan in here, that if, if in fact it's not 30 days, that we get to set the timeline and make it 15 instead, so we can expedite this. And this is going to be an issue that probably doesn't need to be hashed out at a full commission meeting, because if there's a whole slew of applicants, and everybody's pushing for certain candidates, and we're evaluating, interviewing them, I think we're going to have to have a special call meeting to do this. But to me, if, if we don't have to wait for 30 days, there's no reason why we couldn't have this decided by the end of the year. And I, I do think we need to make this a priority, because we've got to have a leadership, somebody to fill the leadership void out there at the sheriff's office.
Any other discussion? Yep? Call for the question, is there a second? Second, Mr. Johnson, and others, all in favor of the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote?
A yes, a yes would be to call for the question, and then we'll be calling for the vote on the actual resolution.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
He's not recording.
Still have three people, two people that haven't voted, and now one. Mr. Johnson, is your machine not functioning?
I'm voting yes.
There, there you go, you have now voted.
I'm voting no.
All right, record the votes, please.
11 yes, 8 no, 1 abstain.
All right, the call for the question has passed, now please cast-
Mr. Chairman, you have to have a two-thirds majority to call for questions.
That's right, I forgot that again. Two-thirds out of 20 today is, motion fail. Goes Mr. Johnson abstaining?
It's still not two-thirds.
It's still not two-thirds. It would take 14. Mr. Gooch?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Attorney, going back to my original question about the, the ability to run and the ability to run for reelection, I think that answer could play a huge determination on your pool of candidates, because I think that will weigh a lot on the applicants and who will apply. So, I, I want to say that that answer needs to be specific, and we need to decide if that's going to be part of our application process before these dates become written in stone. So, I think that answer needs to be, and we need to decide on that, because I really do think it'll change the pool.
It may change the pool, but he's going to have to have time to research the fact, can we even do that? So, we're going to put that off till the December meeting to make this decision.
I'm saying it's important enough that I have to get that down.
But we're, on the one hand, we're talking about urgency, on the other hand, we're talking about postponed, Mr. Kaplan?
I think what Commissioner Gooch is trying to say is, we have some very well-qualified individuals out there that probably are going to want to possibly go after this position. However, with any of them that are veteran law enforcement officers, they're putting a lot on the line on- a lot on the line on this decision, and they may be walking away from something very big to know that they don't have a chance to rerun and continue the position. So, I'm a little confused by that decision. If we have somebody come out that is doing great things in the department, and the momentum and the morale is growing, why would we inhibit that? So, I think for us to go in either direction is, is pigeonholing ourself, and I believe what he's trying to say is we do need to have clarity so we can have the best individuals step up to the plate. The second question I have is, Commissioner Stevens, I think, makes a great point. I retract what I said about extending this, because we do have a leadership problem out there. But I have a question. Are we gonna have, are the commissioners in the body gonna be privy to who picks up the packets and who turns in the packets in advance, or is that gonna be private information that can't be disclosed?
They're, they're gonna pick up the packets from the mayor's office, so we will keep a log of everyone that picked up a packet. Then they still have the responsibility, if they so choose, they may not take it on down to the post and actually apply, but it's their responsibility to take it to them to make the application.
But if we as...
Determination of the qualification.
If we as commissioners contacted the office, will we be allowed to know who's picked up packets?
Yes, every day.
Okay. Thank you.
Be public record, yes. Mr. Johnson?
I don't appear to be grandstanding, but I've got one more statement that I need to make. The rationale is that would you appoint someone as a CEO of a failing company, and then when that company, by asking them the question, okay, you know, if you bring it back, we're gonna appoint someone else? I mean, that, that's not even really rational, and that's not the prudent thing to do. So, I don't think, and I think it'd be a slippery slope to try to put that stipulation about, are you gonna run at the end of this time if everything's okay? I don't think the applicable law, I don't think it would allow us to do that, you know? So, I think it's a slippery slope to even think about it.
Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The idea that the expedited decision and diligence are mutually exclusive is, is not true. I mean, we can get this done before the end of the year or right after the beginning of the year, and still do our diligence and study the applications and pick a good person. And so, if, if there's not a 30-day requirement from the post commission, which I am tending to agree with Mr. Gurley, because I couldn't find anything readily accessible online when I looked earlier. Now, maybe there is one, but I thought you had said before they were gonna get that to you earlier this week, and it apparently has not come in yet. But to me, if there's no 30-day waiting period, I see no reason why the applicants couldn't have their packets turned in by December 2nd, and that would give the post commission their two weeks to study those and figure out who is qualified and get certified, and then as soon as that happens, then as the chairman of the commission, you could call a special meeting, and we could consider all those applicants and whittle those down until we find somebody that we're willing to work with as the sheriff. So, I would make that a motion, that if there's not a 30-day waiting period from the post commission, that the applications be turned in no later than December 2nd to the mayor's office, or, or the, the, the applications be turned in to the post commission, as the resolution says, by December 2nd. They would have until December 16th to qualify those and certify the applicants that do meet the standards, and then at that time, the mayor would be able to set a special call meeting, and we would evaluate those applicants and choose one.
That's his motion. I mean, motion fail for lack of a second. Now, we have this motion on the floor as presented, and if the 30 days is a requirement, January the 12th, you'll make the final decision. That's a few days after the 1st of January, which Mr. Stevens just mentioned. Mr. Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I, I get a little bit more confused the longer we go, and the reason I didn't support the call for the, for the question a minute ago was because I want a couple of these things at least discussed. We, I'm not sure I understand the timeline, and I wanna understand the timeline that's in this resolution before I vote on it, and that's the reason that I had a little bit of concern with it. It appears to me, and correct me, Josh, or Mayor Burgess, if I'm wrong about this, the timeline is that the applicants have till, I'm sorry, they, on the 22nd, they could pick the applications up, or the packets up, and have them turn back in 30 days later, somewhere around the 20th of December, somewhere in that neighborhood, right? 20th, 21st, 22nd, something like that. Is that right?
The 30 days from November the 22nd, whatever that figures out to be, so that's, it's eight more days in October, and...
Okay, let's say the 20th of December.
That's right.
That date, correct? Around about, within a day or two. And then what happens after that? Will you, next two weeks, to vet all of these?
The post, the post has their opportunity to review those and, and take whatever time it may take, up to 14 days.
And you'll call a special me, called meeting on the 12th? Is that correct?
Well, their 14 days would end on, on or about January the 6th. We would then give all, all the information over in their list of qualified candidates to you folks on no later than January the 9th. You already have scheduled a January the 12th regular meeting.
Our, our meeting in January is on the 12th?
The 12th.
Looked at my calendar.
So, that's about as fast as you can do it with 13 and 40, 14.
The, the plan is to, for the commission to review all of these applicants in a regularly scheduled meeting, and what if there's 50 of them? That's, that's my concern right now at this point, that somehow, some way, that needs to be whittled down. And if I'm a member of the steering committee, and if I said, let's take it all to the commission, I wasn't considering that there are so many applicants out there. There needs to be a way, somewhere between the end of that process and that commission meeting, that someone, and maybe it's the steering committee in conjunction with the mayor or someone else, to do the interview process, and maybe the steering committee could recommend all that they feel are qualified, whether it's two or 20, but at least whittle that down. If we only have five applicants, I'm, I'm okay with that, but if we have 50 applicants, I'm not sure that there's any way that we can come to a good decision that night, because there'll be a lot of people supporting a lot of different folks, and, and I'm, I'm concerned about that. So, I think there needs to be another step put in here, and if you would at least consider that, maybe as being in our best interest, and report back to us if you could.
So, we're the steering committee on the other, and maybe you should, maybe, of that interview, and, 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 and,
December the 15th is your next commission meeting. We'll know on December the 15th how many applicants you've got, because anybody that's interested would have already gone into the process of getting qualified. I want to remind you that each of these, there's five or six things they have to do. Some of them, may or may not have already had these things done. They have to have a physical, they have to have a psychological evaluation, they have to be fingerprinted, there are a number of things. So there takes a little bit of time to do some of those things that we need, and there's Thanksgiving. So, anyway, I'm not sure we can really speed the process up and still give people a fair opportunity to get their qualifications together and submit it. Mr. Gurley?
Yes, I think to what Commissioner Phillips spoke about, I think we may have to have a special call meeting of the commission, maybe a couple of days before the full commission meeting in terms of a regular commission meeting, because we've seen here tonight, I came expecting majority of the commission meeting to be taken up by this discussion when it really and truly, an hour and a half was taken up by zoning issues. So if we have other issues, I think maybe two days before or something, commission meeting on Thursday night, we have a special call meeting the Tuesday night before, whittle down the list, and then wind up voting on, taking a final vote. But I think we're going to have to have a special call meeting, it may need to start an hour earlier to allow us to go through that. I think Commissioner Phillips is right, we're going to, we cannot, in a regular commission meeting, go through 20 or 25 or 30 applicants. So I think we can leave that to your discretion to call a special meeting once we see how many, or we can make a motion to that effect next full commission meeting in December. Thank you.
And I agree with that, and I think Josh and you guys submitting questions that you may have that need to be discovered, and we can determine how many of these things we've already addressed by December the 15th, and maybe we need a special meeting after that, shortly thereafter, whatever, to do this and to report on the findings of what we can stipulate or not. Mr. Jordan?
Well, we'll know by next month if we have any rezonings. Rezonings typically burn some time. We have sometimes times we don't have any. You know, we can try and keep the agenda short. We could start earlier, because if we have a whole another meeting, a whole another day, it's going to cost the taxpayers to pay us all to come in. We could start at four o'clock, or something like that. You know, we're already here. I think we make a lot of these decisions next month, like you said. We'll know how, we know if you've had 100 packets go out or four. You know, if we've got three or four, we may spend two hours, we may well spend 15 minutes making this decision when the time comes. One person may stand out above the rest, and I don't think we ought to, even if we can legally say, you can't run for this office. I'm going to use that as a major decision point myself, but I don't want to exclude a strong candidate and I'm giving them the chance to apply, and you have a weaker candidate applies because they make sure they won't run. I think that's all part of our process, we decide with, but I don't think, even if we can legally do that, I don't, while I don't want to give anybody a leg up, I don't want to take a tool out of our toolbox, an opportunity off the table. So, and I think we can make a lot of these decisions where we're going in December before we go and start changing the process at this point in time.
McAdoo, you haven't spoken.
Thank you. I've got one quick question of a county attorney, because there's been a couple of things brought up tonight that are really concerning to me, because you're saying that we've got all this activity going on out at the jail now. I would like for the county attorney to explain to me precisely what is going on with the comptroller at the sheriff department at this moment, so I will know if I have to make an immediate decision, or we've got time to spread it out. I don't know. I've heard this, I heard that, I heard this in the news and whatnot. So can someone give me a summary of what the comptroller's doing out at the jail right now?
Mr. McCrary says he doesn't know what's going on with the comptroller. The comptroller finally released publicly what they've been working on since, well, they say it's the 2014 audit period, but it hadn't been that many, it hadn't been two years actually, but it's almost. So they just released that, Mr. McAdoo. It's public record, I can share a copy of their findings with every one of you, pretty much, except for the addition of the one individual that's been indicted today. Pretty much all of this centers around what happened with respect to the sheriff and Mr. Russell, and everything basically they reported is included, has been included in the indictment of the sheriff and the other two individuals. So that report from the comptroller is just simply a confirmation of everything that's already been done through the federal court system, you might say, except for this one person that was indicted again today. Now, I think you had another question, though. What was the other one? Is that it? Okay. Mr. Reed?
Mr. Chairman, I think our county attorney used the correct words a while ago when he said we stepped off in no man's land, but I think we've been in no man's land for a good while. But thanks to a citizens group that did the efforts that they did, we are now having to deal with this issue. And it's important that we don't walk off into a rabbit hole, and if we're not careful, we'll spend a lot of time dealing with dates and times, as we're doing here. And I think number four sort of takes care of some of the things we've talked about here tonight, that we retain the authority to vary or alter the schedule or requirements set for this. And I think you've mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that we do have a meeting December the 15th that will give us some insight on the applications that are coming, and then we can also probably fix some of these things we've all mentioned here to give us some time to look over this. And as Commissioner Stevens has mentioned there, there are problems out there that we have in the sheriff's department that are there. And I think what we have here, when you go into no man's land, you like to have a map, and I would want to give my appreciation to those who have set this resolution together right here, and I think this is the beginning of a map to get us into that no man's land to get us out. It's important that we, as 21 commissioners here, be right, because that's what the people out there are looking at, is that we are right in what we do and pick the individual that's going to fix what we've got out there and our problems that we have. It's not only the people in this county that's looking at us either, because we all know that this is something totally new, not only to us, but other people across this state. So there is a lot of people watching what goes on here and what we do. I'm just honored that I have this group to work with and what we're doing here. So if I can do this, I'd like to call for the question again, if we can.
Do you have a second? Mr. Jordan and others, I believe. All right, all of you, and, excuse me, Mr. Kaplan, you want to make a comment there?
I just want to make one correction on the date and the timeframe. November 22nd to December 15th is 23 calendar days. That would still give someone seven days to turn in a packet on the 30-day requirement. If I'm running for this office, I'm going to hold my cards close, I'm probably going to wait to see who's submitting packets, and I'm probably not going to be the first person to turn them in. So we could be cutting out some of the best, most qualified candidates by trying to run into this decision December 15th and not using the full 30 days.
All right, we have a motion calling for the question again, so I guess I might as well just say, please cast your votes and make it more official without judging a voice vote. Mr. Joe Frank? Call for the question is to vote for us to then vote on the resolution.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, please record the votes.
Twenty yes, zero no, motion passes.
Wow. Okay, we've had, again, a very, very healthy discussion, and thank you very much. We do have pending on the floor a motion to approve the resolution as presented and seconded properly, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'm going to yield the floor to-
You can go ahead and say, I'm going to say one thing before you do that. You can rest assured that Josh, we're going to start working, we've already started working on this even tonight, any number of these issues that are yet unknown to us, we're going to try our very best. And please, submit your issues that we haven't talked about, you think we should consider, so that we can have a good, healthy discussion on December the 15th or before, if we need to. All right, Mr. Gooch?
The following two resolutions were actually written by Commissioner Robert Stevens, and I'm going to yield the floor to him to present those two resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, whereas due to a situation with an elected official in Rutherford County, there appears to be a need to allow a county or municipal legislative body to suspend an elected official under felony indictment without pay upon a two-thirds vote. And whereas if the elected official is thereafter convicted or pleads guilty to the felony, he she would not have, receive back pay upon the order of judgment. And whereas if the elected official is thereafter acquitted, he or she would be reinstated and receive back pay. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County and the state of Tennessee as a whole, for the state legislature to enact legislation providing for the removal of elected officials who are under felony indictment as provided herein. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to forward a request to the Tennessee State Legislature to amend the current law by acting a statute allowing a county or municipal legislative body to suspend an elected official under felony indictment without pay upon a two-thirds vote. If the elected official is thereafter convicted or pleads guilty to the felony, he or she would not receive back pay upon the order of judgment. If the elected official is thereafter acquitted, he or she will be reinstated and receive back pay. Be it further resolved, the county clerk is directed to forward this request to the state representatives for Rutherford County. Resolve this 17th day of November 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Mr. Allen and any number of other people raising their hand. Questions, discussions? Mrs. Cook, did you want to speak?
Should this be sent to the other counties too, to see if they want, because this goes to the legislative, doesn't it?
Those are our legislative delegation, yes.
Okay, should the other counties be notified by us and see, because they've had problems with some elected officials?
Well, we certainly could send it to all of them if our clerk would be so kind to do that. We can, and they-
Just a thought.
All right, we'll, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's good. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second resolution deals with establishing a procedure for recall elections for elected officials. And I would like to note ahead of time that during the discussion at Steering Committee, we left this wide open and did not limit it to felony indictments, and the way that the resolution was drafted, it specifically talks about recalls for people that have been indicted with a felony charge. So after I read the resolution, I would like to offer an amendment to it to make it applicable to any elected official, not just one that's under felony indictment. Whereas due to a situation with an elected official in Rutherford County, there appears to be a need to allow for a recall vote when an elected official is indicted for a felony offense. And whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County and the state of Tennessee as a whole, for the state legislature to enact legislation or amend the Tennessee Constitution, as the case may be, to provide a method for recall vote when an elected official is indicted for a felony offense. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners to forward a request to the Tennessee State Legislature to enact legislation or amend the Tennessee Constitution, as the case may be, to provide for a method of recall vote when an elected official is indicted for a felony offense. Be it further resolved, the county clerk is directed to forward this request to the state representatives for Rutherford County. Resolve this 17th day of November 2016. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second from Commissioner Turner?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to offer an amendment to this to remove any references to felony offenses and make it applicable to any elected official for any reason. If our citizens would have had this opportunity a year ago, they could have petitioned and called for a recall election and decided as a body whether we wanted to continue working with this elected official or not. So-
All right, motion in a second, but I'd like for some, a little more definitive clarification on the wording of this. It says right now, to allow for a recall vote when an elected official is indicted for a felony offense. To allow for a recall vote, period?
Yes.
That's the end of the sentence? Is that what you're suggesting in your amendment? Okay, and so, Mr. Clerk, if you can, and that has to be also changed in paragraph three, to provide for a method of a recall vote, period, not when elected, an elected official is indicted for a felony offense. So, Mr. Jordan?
Shouldn't there be some reason besides somebody just made the people mad? I mean, I understand the felony offense, I'm 100% behind that, or maybe even a misdemeanor or something, but just because, I don't know, it's kind of wide open right there, and it doesn't take much to get 14 commissioners mad at you, and all of a sudden you've got a recall election going. So I, I think this may be a little bit too far. I don't know.
Yeah, I would agree with Commissioner Jordan. I can go along with and would support the felony offense. However, you know, you could drop some trash out of your car and be cited for illegal dumping or whatever, a misdemeanor, a $50 fine, and someone could use that as an excuse, or like you said, they just don't like you. Recall election gets to be expensive for anything other than a serious offense. I will be voting no on the amendment.
Mr. Schaefer, excuse me, Mr. P., he was already-
Well, if you've looked around the country recently, there's been other states that have recall elections. The governor of Wisconsin was up for a recall, and he defeated, but there's stipulations that the legislature would make as to what it would take to get a recall election, and that's usually, for example, something like 10% of registered voters that voted in the last governor's election, or something like this. And they could set up a stipulation of the recall, be it the next local election or state election or whatever they wanted to. You're asking the legislature to set this up and not, not give it to a 21-member body. It's going to be, this would, a recall would go to the voters.
Yes, sir. Mr. P.?
Well, Commissioner Stevens, I actually happen to agree with you on this, but I've talked to some legislators, and I'm not going to say who, but I've got a feeling that if it goes in the form that you just amended, that it won't pass. I think the form that you've got there, at first, has a better chance of passage than the second amended version. So, you know, just a word of caution, if it, if it did go and with that amendment on there, I doubt that it'll pass.
Other comments or questions?
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, thank you. The way I understand it, this is a kind of a long drawn process drawn out. You're not looking at something that's going to happen in this next legislative session, you're talking about a four- or five-year process. Am I, am I on about the right track because of-
If a constitutional amendment is required, yes, it would be four or five years.
So we're not looking at something that's going to happen next week.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We intentionally, at Steering Committee, left this wide open to let the legislature decide however they thought would be the best way to move forward with this. And the states that do have recall election procedures, a certain percentage of the population in a district or in a county as a whole have to sign a petition, and that has to be certified by the Election Commission or some state agency that the number of signatures was met. And then after that, a date is set for the recall election, and the people will vote and decide whether the person retains the office or not. This is not something that the county commission would decide, and we intentionally wanted to leave it wide open so that the state legislature could look at other states and set it up however they want to, if they need to amend the Constitution, it has that in there as well. And if it's just limited to situations where there's a felony indictment, there might be somebody that's done some unethical things, or if it's acting inappropriately and the voters can't do something about that. Had we had the ability to call for a recall election a year ago, our citizens would have been empowered to fight public corruption, they could have banded together and gotten the necessary signatures and called for a recall election and taken matters into their own hands. You know, there was an article in the paper today where the chancellor, hearing the ouster lawsuit, chided the county attorney's office and the district attorney's office for not handling this matter. And if you've got a frustrated public, as we did, I don't know about you, but I got phone call after phone call, and visit after visit, and email after email, and texts and Facebook message about this situation, what are you doing about it? Had we had the opportunity for the citizens to call for a recall election, it would have empowered them to take care of this problem without getting frustrated at us with our tied hands. So all this is designed to do is to give the power to the people and let them make a decision if there's a situation that they don't like. It empowers the voters to fight public corruption.
All right, thank you. Mr. Baum, you haven't made a comment here?
I just want to add my concern to broadening this resolution to allow two-thirds vote to remove a public official for any reason above and beyond a felony. I think we want to defer to the voters whenever possible, and if they have elected a constitutional officer, I think we want to defer to the voters' wishes, except under extraordinary circumstances. And a felony indictment, in my opinion, is an extraordinary circumstance, but anything short of that, I think I would be uncomfortable broadening this resolution. And I'd also have some concerns that our legislators would even think it's constitutional. Imagine kind of an absurd situation where the U.S. Congress passes something where they could remove a president with two-thirds of the votes in the House or the Senate. That would be an encroachment of the legislative branch on the executive branch in that case. So this strikes me as something that may even be unconstitutional because one branch of government's encroaching on another.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Go make one more comment?
If you don't mind. Commissioner Baum, I'm not sure if you're following the purpose of this. The first proposal was to allow a legislative body, be it city council or a county commission, to suspend an elected official that's been indicted with a felony charge. It just suspends them, it doesn't remove them from office. It suspends them until the case is disposed of. We've already passed that to send it on. This proposal asks the legislature to establish a recall procedure for the voters to take matters into their own hands. The county commission or the city council would have nothing to do with that. It would be a petition that started and signed by the voters as a whole, and it's going to be very hard to get enough signatures for that. The states that have them, it's very rare that they even are successful with their drive to get enough voters. But all I'm asking you to do is to authorize the voters to have the option to call for a recall if there's a situation where there's a public outcry, or there's an upset population about whatever problem, if they have an opportunity to do something about it.
But this seems, Mr. Chairman, excuse me-
Go ahead, Mr. Dodd.
This does seem rather open. If it's, say, a county district that has 600 voters, and say hypothetically a commissioner went against a lot of constituents in a rezoning matter, could they get 200 signatures in a small district and vote to oust that county commissioner because they didn't like a zoning issue?
They could, they could.
But you want it to go all the way down, you want to give the state legislature the authority to perhaps, in some years, it may take some years, to dictate all the way down to the county level, to the district level? Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? We have an amendment on the floor, properly seconded, that basically removes and eliminates all the conditions, the one condition that was indictment for a felony. That's been removed from this. So if you vote yes, that's the amendment. We're going to vote on the amendment first. All right, are you ready to vote on the amendment? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Eight yes, 12 no, motion fails.
Now we're ready to vote on the resolution as originally presented. Anyone have any questions on that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stevens. Does anyone have any other business they'd like to bring before this body? Commissioner P.
All right, y'all hadn't had a country ham breakfast in a few weeks, I'd imagine, but Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department is having a ham breakfast this Saturday, the 19th, from 6:00 to 10:00. We want to invite everyone out. Thank you.
Commissioner Baum, I'm not Baum, Kaplan, excuse me.
Friday morning greenhouse ministries, 8:00 will be the turkey giveaway. Volunteers are needed because it is on a Friday instead of Saturday, so come on down at 8:00 and help hand out some turkeys to people that are in need.
Commissioner Allen?
I hate to interrupt the feel-good announcements with this question, but I need to know, what are we going to do regarding TCI? I think this is what Commissioner McAdoo was referring to earlier, which was the possibility that our jail's going to be decertified in their December meeting. Do we have a plan of action to address that?
Well, you've already started your plan of action. What you did tonight, you approved the changing out of the 12 that you had approved for detention officers to put four of them into booking. That's the primary reason that we brought this forward, so that we can start the journey of putting ourselves in a position to get properly certified at the next normal inspection period, which will probably be sometime early in 2017.
So do you think we will be decertified in December?
I think in all probability, there's nothing we can do. They've already, we've been inspected, we've been re-inspected, and we failed the re-inspection, which is tantamount to a decertification.
Do we have a plan of action for how we're going to know in the future? I think it's important for public safety to know, or this body to know-
Public safety can help us develop a plan of action, but we're going to have to do some of our own internal evaluations of how we're doing with respect to this one particular item that they've cited that was not corrected after the initial inspection, so we're going to have to do our own inspections, you might say, many inspections as we go along to see if we're making progress.
I would assume there are similar inspections that are needed for the workhouse and also juvenile detention. Do we know how we're doing in those inspections?
They are not similar things, because this, what we're doing at the, has not occurred at the other locations. I mean, it's about how we're watching people that are in potential risk for harming themselves. And often our standard operating procedures say that we must check those folks. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing, kind of to piggyback a little bit on what Commissioner Allen was saying, and I'm not sure how much can be addressed at this point, but with the indictment that came down for Major McBurney yesterday, I was going to reach out to Mr. McCrary, and I know that Lisa's here from the sheriff's office. Do we have any indicator on what those conditions were that Public Safety Committee might need to know about so we could address some of those questions? I know there's been some confusion. I've gotten some phone calls saying that, trying to understand what that means related to his situation right now at the sheriff's office. Is he still employed in the same position, same role, or things going to change from there? Is there anything we could know before the Public Safety Committee meeting about his status, or is that something that we need to address with Chief Garrett? Or how do we go about getting that information in a timely manner?
Okay, let's just say this, he is still an employee of the sheriff's office, nothing has been done to change that. Mr. McCrary and Ms. Stevenson are in intensive review of what our options may or may not be.
Okay, that's kind of what I was looking for, which is, I know that there's been some challenges with that, I'm just trying to make sure that-
When they make those determinations, there will be discussion with the leadership at the sheriff's office as to what action should be taken.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other business? You know, that 25-minute meeting we had a few months ago, I think we've made up for that one and two or three more. We are adjourned.